Uh, the hour of Christmas PM has arrived. So a conference meeting is on order. Please stand with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, with this love, integrity, and justice for all. Okay, um, we do have a forum. And is Julie?
Julie is in Washington DC.
She's in Washington DC, okay. Okay, well, maybe she's flattered. Uh, next is the approval of the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of items?
No.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda. I'll say it.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor. I opposed, motion carried. Next, we will go to item number five, student representative update.
Um, so a little bit earlier, uh, in December, uh, the library always runs with SECLE and we work and we do the Hatchet Hustle. And so we just come together and bring some community members and we walk around and it's worth still the library. Um, it helps raise money for the library, which goes to things like the summer library program and be divine community. Uh, like if you notice outside of some of the local businesses, there's always those flower, like things that's with the SECLE did. Um, turnout was a little less than last year, but it was still, uh, a nice day and very amount of community support.
So the Pittsville area theater partnered with the Pittsville School District to put out a performance of like a Christmas Carol. Uh, I think this actually was happening during the last meeting, the first show was on. So Pittsville had elementary and high school students involved as actors in the backstage crew. And everybody that I talked to said it went extremely well and they were all very proud of the performance.
Very well done.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so our seniors, they wrapped up their senior internships and so we just got some quotes from some of their experiences. Um, Rand Boshel said she loved it in that, um, she, during her time there, she oversaw welfare checks and bite cases and let raccoons go in the wilds. Um, she was with the Marshall Boys. It was awesome. Um, Miles Grace said it was phenomenal. We learned, uh, much that will help with his future career in the medical field and he did that for Oaks. And then, um, Bray Friday said that she enjoyed it. It felt like a home environment. Um, she went with the family home. Uh, and she like talked into the rest of us to help me with that with their daily activities.
Some important dates to keep in mind. End of turn two at January 16th. So if you see any stressed teenagers walking around, probably finals. And then beginning of turn three starts on the 20th. So some interesting things that have been happening with clubs. Our science lab here had their first virtual invitational. So we had two first place in ready to do it and horticulture and a sixth place in geocaching. And then we have our first inverse meet this Saturday in Metford, I think. And then Quiz Bowl started this December. So currently our team is two and one. And last Thursday, we beat Alman Bancroft 196 to zero. So that was, um, we really took it to them.
So that's not a type.
I wish it would. And it will be a game this Thursday at Trac.
I, I would tell you the girls, we lost to Alman Bancroft in basketball the other season and the girls came in right after this and said, Mr. Mike, we got revenge. And we were six to zero. We're not a sport. Yeah.
So with the boys basketball, uh, yeah, last week, the boys basketball team faced losses to Brooklyn Chelly in court. Um, they lost to Portland by three points. So it was a close game, making their record four and six. And then girls basketball last night, the team lost to Chelly as well. Um, bringing their record to the, uh, nine and four on the season so far. Um, and then Reece Scrim, obviously she got the Pittsells new all time leading scorer for girls basketball. And soon here, uh, both basketball teams will be having future appreciation. I, I know ours was just set for February and November. And then I don't think the words have set theirs yet.
Do you want to tell the board a little bit about what we did at last year for the first time?
So basically, um, each of our, um, girls and boys on the team, they, uh, they make a teacher that really like had an impact of their education and we like write a little paragraph for them. It's usually in the books since we get. And, uh, we just, they come out during halftime and we introduce them. We will hug and appreciate them.
And then the wrestling, they have continued in four tournaments so far this year. If you want to read all the places we had, obviously our wrestling team was doing pretty good this year. Uh, they've been doing really good. And then last week, Pittsville hosted a dual invitational. That was a good experience for wrestlers. I know, I don't understand wrestling that much, but the boys said like no, there's no placing in it, but a lot of them won both their matches. So they're excited about that. And then the dance team also started up and have been entertaining the crowd during the halftime of basketball games. And we are actually the only team in our conference that has a dance team, which I always noticed. So I think it's always a good way to show our kind of pride.
So in, in recognition of the, of course, for those from our generation, the girls now, the holy jeans seem to be a trend that the kids did. I had a little fun with the girls in the, I posted in the Facebook page last week, it was a picture of a bunch of teenage girls walking with jeans like Kayleys and it said that vibe of going out for, they had ice cream, of going out for ice cream after his spider bear attack. So I always see, I see the kids walking in. And those, those jeans, so.
After the speech, they all called me up, I mean. Like, okay, after the speech, they all called me up. The jeans.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, um, good to, good to catch up on a wide variety of things going on. Appreciate that. Um, next, item number six is celebrations.
Mr. Clark. Well, I figured I should come in and do an update on the Christmas shop before we got to Valentine's Day. So, um, so this year was our seventh annual Christmas shop. Granted, we took off a couple of years for COVID. Um, this was our largest sales year. We raised $2,000. And the items that we sold were all items that were donated, um, from staff members, community members, uh, to the local businesses. Um, we sell everything for prices of one quarter to $2 for really high, uh, items. Uh, we have great volunteers and community support. Um, you know, some of the businesses that came out to, to help with, with this was Event City, uh, Associated Banks sent some people in to help kids with their shopping. Pittsville Family Foods, they helped donate bags towards our shop. Um, we have the organizations like the Lions Club and American Legion that help, uh, donating items or, uh, funds to make sure that every child gets a chance to shop. And then we have so many great volunteers that come in. Uh, it, it's wonderful to see the community come in and help these kids, uh, with their shopping. And I think they get a lot of enjoyment out of it as well. Um, but yeah, we, we did great this year. Raised $2,000, um, 500 went to providing, uh, providing for Panthers, which they can use for whatever they need, uh, to help students in, in-house. And then 1,500 went to PANS. And we presented that check at the, um, Christmas program, which was moved to Friday afternoon. Um, but we provided, uh, a check to them and we've gotten a thank you card back just letting them, letting us know how much this helps so many in our community.
Ron, could you just briefly explain to the board, provided for Panthers? I don't want to make the assumption they all know what that is.
Uh, providing for Panthers is, uh, Mrs. Han is in charge of that and that is in that, um, a, um, location is almost like a food pantry in-house for students. And it provides clothing, it provides food items that might go home to families. Um, whatever student needs might come up. If, uh, somebody reaches out and says, hey, this student could use a, uh, new backpack because their family can't afford a new backpack. Um, sometimes it's hygiene items. Uh, so it, it does help a wide variety of areas. Um, I do know that, uh, it helped with a few families that needed a little extra support during that Christmas holiday.
Funded solely by donations from much of that from alumni.
It is a lot from alumni. Um, I, I don't know a lot about providing for Panthers. I just know that this year we thought that would be sorry, a great spot for our funds to go. Um.
It is fully funded through donations from various organizations and individuals.
So thought that would be a great spot to send some of our funds to from the Christmas shop. Uh, the other thing I want to come in and celebrate is, uh, our after-school program, before and after-school program. Last year, we ended the year, uh, with 84 students that were signed up and participated in at least one day during, um, after, before or after-school programming. This year, we have broke 100. Uh, we're at 101 students signed up for our program. So an increase of 17 students. Uh, last year, our nightly average, if you take out Fridays, because Friday we just offer a morning and that really brings our average up. We averaged 41 students tonight. This year, we're averaging 49 students tonight. Um, our, our light night of the week would be Mondays. But Wednesdays and Thursdays, we're up over 50 kids, uh, at the program a night. And during this time, we provide a snack. We also provide homework help for students. Uh, for our younger students that don't have homework, they have, um, some high school helpers who are coming in and reading, uh, or doing math activities. And then we have lots of different enrichment opportunities. Some of our more popular ones are robotics, um, art, band lessons, which we started, uh, right before Christmas break. And then we just started cooking and Julie Stren came this last week and offered a cooking, uh, unit with our junior high kids, which was huge on the way home. Uh, one of the kids who, uh, sometimes struggles to find an activity he was interested in, wanted to get home and hoped that mom could take him to Walmart so that he could pick up the ingredients because he wanted to make, uh, pizza in a mug for his sibling and mom. So, um, there's a lot of different, uh, opportunities for our students. We try to offer three enrichments a night so that they can choose which activity because last year we just ran one activity and there wasn't a lot of choice for them. They had just that choice and that's all we had. This year, we are using, um, the funds that we're not spending on bussing because I'm taking a school van and I'm delivering kids home. Uh, we're using that to boost our staffing. So we have more people helping with homework and we have more helping with our, uh, different enrichment opportunities.
And as a reminder for the board, this was part of that Nora Rogers 21st Century Learning Grant that, uh, this is year two of five years that we were approved for $400,000, $80,000 per year to fund this program, um, for five years of year two. So.
And if we can really keep, if we can keep growing or keep our numbers where they're currently at, we could reapply for the grant for a larger, larger house for the next time around. And that would open up, you know, a few more opportunities for us.
This has exceeded what our original proposal, what we had to project and we have doubled what we originally projected. Uh, would it participate, but it enabled through creative, uh, you know, the bussing, Ron doing that, being able to use, use the dollars to support the students that are, that's, you know, about 18% of our students participating in the program, which is phenomenal.
Um, I trust we'll be at the workshop on Thursday?
Yep, I put in for that today, so.
That would have been awkward if you said, no. I know you are.
You're, you're busy all day.
I, I'm, I'm here for it, yes. Uh, I come in in the morning for the before-school program and then I'm here until our last, last kids are delivered home.
So I'm on board your weekends?
I do, I, I really do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep. Lots to celebrate. Thank you, Ron. Okay, uh, more celebrations. Um, item number seven is the CISA V presentation of the school district report card.
So I'd like to welcome Chris Betcher from CISA V here to, uh, to our board meeting. Uh, as I indicated to the board, we did our district level presentation, but Chris and others at CISA have actually, they travel to districts to do these presentations for school boards. I thought it would be beneficial for the board to hear from Chris's perspective, like a comparative analysis, you know, statewide and be able to ask Chris any questions about how, you know, we've looked at the data, but what, what does it really mean and what, what trends are seeing statewide? So Chris?
Okay, so yes, please stop. Ask any questions you have along the way. We'll hold those till the end because it might make your understanding a little better. Uh, I'm going to talk through just some overview on the front page and as you mentioned, kind of talk about some general things.
Okay, first question. It's really hard to see all of the writing and the end numbers. Is this presentation available for us to pull up on our computers?
This is actually your district report card that's, that's publicly available.
Yeah, but she's going to go right, she's just going to go through our report card.
You're just going right through the report card?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, publicly available on the DPI site.
And it's also on our website if you go down.
We linked it off the website.
It's easiest for, it's easiest for people at home to play along.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
In the last board, uh, district administrators update, I linked all those links or in that, so if you want to pull that up or whatever is easiest.
All right, so the first thing I just wanted to highlight is you remember that every year your weightings may change in this pie, the priority weights area because that is based on your economically disadvantaged numbers every year. And so that's why you'll see slightly different weighting between your buildings as well because we typically see a higher, um, economically disadvantaged in our elementary buildings as we do in our high school buildings. Right? So that's another piece to keep in mind. But even from year to year, um, community impact can have that. Like, uh, we've seen the impact of that number being impacted by companies closing or starting up or laying a large portion of their employees off. That does impact that number. So just know that every year when you look at these scores, they might be weighted slightly different, okay? Um, one thing to note is your district, as well as both of your buildings are at exceeds expectations, right? So that is great because normally we see some kind of variability in systems. There's one building that's a little bit lower or one area that needs a little support and yours are really consistent. So that's one thing I'd like to say across the board is that there is consistency from the time the kids enter all the way up through graduation, which is kind of rare, okay? Then talking about the four areas, kind of mentioning those. So if you scroll up, so you can see those four together. Perfect. Um, so we have our achievement area, which is based on the benchmarks that DPI set forth on the state mandated test. So that's forward, it's pre-ACT and ACT, okay? So all three of those are counted in that achievement piece. But we are looking specifically at the, um, ELA and the math. So unfortunately, even though we test science and social studies, it's not figured into our report card, okay? So just kind of know that when we're talking about that. Um, in all of your areas, you, your, um, your, your achievement scores are above or at the state average. There's one that's, um, really close, like a tenth of a point, um, above. So kind of at that, so that, know that that is doing well. Um, because your economically disadvantage is above 35%, unfortunately means that your achievement is probably your smallest area on your report card, okay? So while that's doing well, it's not the biggest impact that you have, okay? That is your growth area. So I want to spend a little more time talking about the growth area. The growth area, one thing that we want to remind people about, especially this year with the benchmark numbers changing per DPI, where they reevaluated what those should be, it's a comparative feature. So even if they hadn't changed the benchmarks, this is still the comparative of the rest of the state. This is where they take each student, they look at their demographics, including their score last year, and say, where are all the other kids kind of in that same bucket of kids? And how do these kids at Pittsville grow? Did they grow more? Did they grow kind of in that average range? Or did they grow less, okay? So it's always comparative. It doesn't, it won't impact on the benchmarks, but that does know that that could change wildly each year. Because if you have five school districts who had a huge growth in the whole, this, in the whole state, that can influence your comparative data, right? They're going to change that average growth up. And even though your kids have had kind of traditional growth, if we look at another growth measure, measure, this one is value add. So it's looking at that comparative piece. Um, if you want to dig in more, I encourage staff and you to look at something called student growth percentages. It's a whole nother presentation, you can do it another time. Or Jason, can you dig into? But that would be your standard kind of growth each year. So it's not the comparative value.
That'll be part of the administrators when we do our updates with our building goals is actually, we attended the CISA, uh, the last CISA, uh, school development seminar and they worked through how to use those comparatives. So. Chris, can I ask you to kind of reiterate something? So, so when you talk about that weight, the achievement piece that she mentioned, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, the irony in that is, is that because we are high, uh, or we, we have a higher percentage of low SES, we don't get as much for what our students are showing in credit achievement is actually, it's less impact than a district that would have a lower poverty rate for the same achievement scores. However, we do get more points for showing growth because the idea would be you want to show growth and that if you have a high population of students that are low socioeconomic status, they may not achieve at as high rates, but the key is that you want to see them growing. And so what we saw is that we actually have some pretty decent achievements scores as well, but we don't get as many points for that because we have a high poverty rate, so.
What, what is the product number used to determine if somebody's in that group of poverty?
Oh, it's based on your, it's based on the applications for free reduced lunch.
Free reduced, what, what is that?
Um, for a 200%.
For us, like, what is our current?
Is it like 200% of poverty?
Yeah, to qualify for free reduced. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it depends on the family size.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's grand, it, there's a scale depending on like, you know, how many people are in the household.
Because we're somewhere, uh, in the low 40s at our elementary school and just slightly lower than that at the high school for poverty rate.
Um, so I have a question, target group outcomes. The target group is the low SES? Or English learners?
No, your target group is the bottom performing 25% of your kids. So they take all those scores, like I mentioned, the forward, the pre-ACT secure, that ACT statewide. They convert because they're all on different, um, scale scores, right? Like different numbers. So they do this math, math thing, which I think is lovely because I'm a math person, and convert it into what's called the Z-score. So that they're all the same and then they line your kids all up and say, who's the bottom 25%? This, the district report card will reflect in that target group will be the bottom 25% of the entire district. It could be heavy high school, it could be heavy elementary. We wouldn't know until we actually do that Z-score. But then when you break into two, the two buildings and look at those, those groups of kids are specific from that building. So your high school target group is only high school students, only nine through 12. And your elementary target group is only kids third through eighth.
And they don't give you the names of those students? You have to request that through DPI. If you send in a request, they will give you a list of your students in your bottom quartile so that we can then dig in and look and see how many are on both math and ELA, appear on both lists. And the principals, that was something the principals did at that workshop at CISA, we were able to dig into our bottom quartile to learn, like, to see if we saw any trends and how we're supporting our most vulnerable learners to try to get those kids, you know? The, the obvious statement here is going to be, you're always going to have a bottom quartile.
Right.
You know, that's the thing about it, it's like, so you're going to move kids up, but you're always going to have a bottom quartile. But that's how statistics work. But the idea would be to identify those students who maybe like their peers and try to support, you know, so that they can, they can.
So one thing we always look at is the growth. Is the growth of that bottom quartile the same or better than your, than the whole population up in the growth area? That's a kind of icon or benchmark that we look at. So the growth for the bottom quartile is 72.7 and your overall is 74.6. So they're pretty close in terms of that growth, okay? What I see as more problematic is when that bottom, that target group, the growth is much farther behind, right? That's, that's something that we would need to look at. But yours is very close. So it's, that to me tells me that once again, that system, we go back to that comparison of growth, there's something in the system working for all kids regardless of what they're coming to school with.
And ideally, we'd like to see that outpace the regular growth scores, which is how you would have those students catch up to their peers. But being close is.
Being close, especially knowing that your, so the, the, I'll be honest, the districts I see when they're outpacing is because the overall growth score has not reached the state average. Your overall growth score is above the state average. So technically, both of your groups of kids are outpacing the state in terms of growth, if that makes sense. So I, I, I wouldn't have any worries there. The biggest gap that I see actually in your target groups is that absenteeism. That's the biggest group because if I look over here under untracked graduation and look at the absenteeism, there's a 10, over 10-point difference or, or no, five-point difference in this one. And one of them, it's a little bit more, I'm trying to remember. Um, I didn't write all those details down. But that's, that's the concern because as that bottom quartile, they're missing more school, which means they're naturally not getting the instruction. They're not having the discussions. They're not hearing critiques of their peers or from their teachers and getting that instant feedback that they do in the class. And so that's going to impact their ability um, to kind of switch on the fly and do those kinds of things.
And that's one of the reasons that, several reasons that Elise and Ron and the administrators, we participated in chief during the Wood County Trensee Task Force, its local agents that meet and talk about chronic absenteeism and the struggle and look at different ways to try to encourage kids to get to school, including looking for barriers for why are they not coming to school for that reason?
Other than that, your attendance is pretty close. Actually, your target group is above your untracked, but it's probably off by just one. Knowing your population size, it was probably one kiddo and it might be the fact that that kiddo needed to continue some programming for a certain reason, right? That's probably what those numbers mean. So I'm not worried about graduation rate either. Those are looking nice. So. Um, those are the bulk of my notes, but what questions does anybody have?
Chris, could you, could you talk briefly about the value-added scores? If we scan down to the value-added scores? Because I know you kind of referenced that, it was something we honed in on. That you referenced with the different peer groups that we get.
Keep going, one more.
Yep, great. We're getting there, right there.
Right, those?
Yep.
Um, yes. Okay, so as I said, when they, when they calculate your report card score, they take each student kind of individually and they get a value-added growth score and that's what's calculated. What they then do is say, okay, let's look at those different demographic areas and divide them up. The reason your growth score isn't an average of these is because a student might be counted in a couple of areas. So in this graphic, we're seeing kids counted twice, three times, four times potentially, depending on which small groups you're looking at. So we don't want to count students four times for your report card. So they only get counted once. But what this does give us is some comparisons. The black line down the middle is that state average. And so anything, um, as you can see where yours are, anything to the right of that, that's a solid box, it's telling you that we have more growth than the state average. Anything to the right of that, that's a solid box, it's telling you that we have more growth than the state average. Anything to the left of that average is below state average growth. And it's, and so you can kind of see if there is a difference. Even your one that is below, it's a 2.8 and a 3.1, so they're pretty close. Um, yeah, we could probably do some deep dive and do a little bit more work there and figure out. And it might be the particular group of students right now that we have. It might be a transition to some new staff or new policies, those kinds of things that we're seeing, right? You might have some newer staff who aren't as well versed in co-teaching or how to provide accommodations. And so that could change as you go through, so some of that you, you would wanna dig into all sorts of reasons, not just the kids' needs.
And, and we did a comparison of the last three years where you can actually see when you put these up and see the, on the continuum. And all of these were moving to the right, which is the direction we want to see them go over the last. I think going back four years, is they, they've started moving in that direction to the right, which is where we want to keep going to the right.
Yes, the state average is not good enough.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Chris. Any other, I mean, anything that pops into your head you wanna add? Chris is like the, she's the.
I love this stuff.
She knows everything about report card and data and everything.
Just, what, what can we do better?
Yeah, Chris, if you had to take away, like, if you had to take a takeaway and be like, we're gonna look into the microscope here, what would you say?
I saw the two areas, but it's particularly this, if I look at this, it's that one small group of students, um, students with disabilities. And then you can see as she scrolls up, it's just one of the academic areas, it's not both. So doing a little.
Up, up, I think that's ELA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's ELA.
But like, so there's something happening for math.
Oh, other way.
There, like, and when you look at this, the math is 3.7, so what have, what might be some accommodations or things that we have done for students in math that could translate? A lot of times in education, you look at ELA and say, how does that translate out? In this case, you might have to look backwards. These kids might really have really strong math skills, so how do I help use those skills? What strategies do we have in math that might help these kids in ELA, right? It could be a little tricky, you might wanna figure out what areas, because we also have the inter, the intervention or the application implementation of Act 20 right now, which is impacting those, you know, particularly our third graders who are taking that test for the first time. But as that rolls up, you might see that impact in there. But if this number happens to be heavy in middle school, definitely, let's look at middle school math teaching versus middle school ELA teaching and what can we learn? And then the other thing that Jason already mentioned, talking about attendance, getting, you know, thinking about how do we connect kids? Who are those kids that are considered our chronic absentee? How do we communicate that to parents? How do we let parents know, like, we want your kid here, how can we help with that? Right, like, it's not a punishment if you're struggling to get your kid to school, just tell us so we can help.
And Chris, as a high poverty district principal, historically has been very good at identifying those basic needs with, with our students as far as making sure that they get to school and that they are feeling, you know, that they are fed and that, that they have those needs taken care of, because you cannot perform academically if you, you know, if you're not able to feel like your, your belly is full at school and those types of things. So I think Pittsville has historically been very good at that holistic approach to supporting our families and our students. Thereby, I think that has a lot to do with what you're seeing in, as far as increases in, you know, the after school program and Collins other things that happen here in Pittsville, how supportive the community is.
And I think that's a huge step, because as those younger kids have a place to go after school, now you have your older kids available to do sports, uh, do the Christmas carol. So there belongs an increase in general, so it does, it, even though you're targeting younger kids, it's got ripple effects all the way up. Yeah.
Um, I, I guess, uh, one of my thoughts is, um, it would be interesting to learn more about the countywide truancy task force and what, what strategies we've been able to learn and.
Let's put that on a future agenda, I don't know if we're gonna do a presentation.
That would be good.
Absolutely.
Do other board members have questions, comments, anything more you want to know about this? Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
If, if stuff comes up, Jason also.
Yeah, you can message me and I'll send it to Chris and she's really good at doing those deep dives. And we have CISA services available that, that do this as part of our CISA contract.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Making a road trip and stuff.
It's an easy drive, I'm straight south of you, so.
Good, good, well, thank you again. And come back and see us again. So, next we are in agenda item number eight, consent agenda. Item A, meeting of certification, B, regular minutes of December 9th. Special meeting minutes, December 10th, financial status and associated reports. I, uh, first of all, any questions about any of those things on the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is the motion seconded to approve the consent agenda on my favor? I opposed, motion passed. Information only updates, item nine, district administrators update.
So board members, you should hit the link to this, that you can pull this up in your email for me. I sent you the link to your email just before the start of the board meeting, so it'd be right at the top, if you want to take a minute.
Yeah, if you could give us a second.
Sure.
Was that the email you sent, right?
Yep, I sent it at about 5:40.
Ah, there it is.
So you should be able to click on it, you can have your own personal version of it.
Yes, the older I get, the harder it is to.
Okay, so, uh, I wanted to spend some time tonight talking about, um, this leads into Friday, um, we have a meeting with Patrick Testet, Senator Testet and Representative Crew, they're coming up to Pittsville to visit on Friday to talk about school funding, so I, I wanted to kind of circle back with the board here on school funding and in the 2024 property tax bills and kind of talk about, Pam and I have been communicating with taxpayers over the last probably three weeks to a month. And in any communications we've received, we've received phone calls, emails, um, visits, we sat and we've met individually. We've returned every call, every email, uh, and met with every taxpayer to help go over the tax bills, um, answer questions, because, um, obviously, as, as the board is aware, there were some significant percentage increases in the property tax bills. And we wanted to make sure that, um, that we were able to be there to answer questions for taxpayers, but also kind of clarify, there were some misconceptions that the entire increase, uh, seen was related to the, the operational referendum that just passed. So I just wanted to kind of give a summary of the general communication that we've done. I'm not gonna go over each individual communication, but the general, um, consensus of what were the questions about and then kind of how we answered them. So definitely go to the next. So, one of the biggest questions was, you know, eh, eh, why the big increase? Why the sudden increase? Why was it such a large percentage increase? And the answer was, and that's kind of multifaceted. One of the things that played a role in that was in '22 and '23, school taxes dropped approximately 30%. Like, I can just speak personally, my previous two tax bills went down 13%, 17%, so exactly 30%. And, uh, that dropped the mill rate down 0.18. And that was down from 8.41 in 2021, which makes the increase, even though the mill rate is lower right now than it was in 2021, when you have a huge drop coupled with an increase and the referendum, it, it makes it seem like it's, which it was a significant increase. But when put into, I use the analogy with a lot of folks, like the stock market, where we see the dips and flows, that, you know, the rises in the stock market. As the idea is, you gotta stay slow and steady, as if you draw a line through, typically, it's gonna be pretty flat over the course of the years. But, but it was a huge shock to, to many people. I think another piece of that, that maybe what led to some confusion is folks were working off of the uh, assessment value rather than the equalized property value, which in some towns was significant. The percent, the percentage difference between the equalized property value and the assessed value. And just for those that, that may not be aware, the equalized property value is what the state, the state sets that and determines that for municipalities. So they will tell, you know, for instance, say town, like, they need to increase their, their assessments, they will say, your equalized property value, you need to increase by 1.1 million, and then the towns determine how to distribute that increase across, you know, all the different properties, residential, maybe commercial, whatever. But the state sets that rate, so, uh, that was something that I, I think a lot of people didn't know is that that was set by the state. Um, and out of our hands as far as what they determine as equalized property value. That played into this, is there was a significant increase over the last several years in equalized property value from the state. The average last year for residential was 20, 25% increases in that, that's a big increase, uh, for, for folks. So even though the mill rate was lower, because of the increase in equalized property value, it was a higher tax impact for people. So, can you go to the next slide, please? Uh, board, please stop me at any point if you'd let me get, um, expander, ask any questions. So the passing of the operational, absolutely had an impact on tax bills. It, it had an impact. It had less of an impact than we actually projected during the presentations, we were projecting it $203 per $100,000 to equalize property value. It actually came in at, um, at 197. So it came in lower than projected, because if, the, the board may remember is that our, our, if a referendum passed approved, mill rate was 8.35. Uh, and we came in at 8.34, below the projection. The mill rate without the referendum passing, because of that $720,000 in lost equalization aid, was gonna be, uh, 637 per 100,000 without the referendum passing. And that was something I think that was eye opening to a lot of folks we spoke to, is when we explained the loss of state aid, that, that they weren't aware that, how was that determined? Well, when they raise your equalized property values, that, which the state, in reality is, the state determines both of those. So they raise your equalized property values, and then they're like, ooh, you guys are property rich, your properties were more, we're gonna, now local taxpayers are gonna foot more of the bill. So they lower your state aid. Also, uh, as I will mention when they future size, we had a tiff tid expire, which had an impact on where we got an infusion of money, and then of course, the state then, that reduces your equalized aid when you get that money. So I think the biggest thing that we tried to get through folks is, I think a lot of folks were thinking, well, 96%, like, that just means the district spent a lot more money. The reality is, it's the same amount of money, it's just the funding source was put more on the local taxpayers through, yes, the referendum passing and that was voted upon, but through that increase in equalized property value and decrease in state aid, that had a significant impact on property tax bills. So, so to just talk about the whole, it was like a three legged stool of things, only one that we had control over, which was the referendum. So, this was the one that was probably the hardest, hardest to swallow, hardest hit, was that they reduced our equalization aid by $720,000 in great part because of that tiff tid ending. And then they raised, I said it already, I guess, a lot of people said, well, that doesn't make sense if the state can control equalized property values, and then by doing that, they, they lower the state aid and increase the, we said, yes, that's exactly right. It's like, it's out of our control, the state controls both of those things, but that's the way it works. We did explain to folks that, uh, fair market, and the board knows this from our presentation, uh, you know, a few months ago, fair market value on your tax bill is equalized property value. So when you see that fair market value, um, I think it, a good comparison I had for several folks I spoke to is, what I said is, pull your 20, 2021 tax bill and tell me your total dollar amount of tax, school taxes from that bill. And then compare it to this tax bill, tell me what that difference is. And there was one person in particular, he had indicated, well, my, my taxes went up $2,600, my school taxes. And I said, pull up that 2021 bill, and he dug it up and he called me back and he said, I said, what is that number? And he said, $2,086, whatever, and, and I said, now, tell me the current one, what's the difference? And it was $804 difference between 2021 and 2024. And I said, if I had told you three years ago that your property taxes over the course of three years with school taxes go up about $800, you probably would've been happy if I said that's all, effectively, that's what they did. But because they went down drastically the previous two years, it looks like a huge, which it is. And I mean, it's a reality, I said that in many of the presentations, I said to people, I said, we have a really low mill rate at the time, we're in the bottom 500 percentile, and I said, but people like the taxes low. They, they like having low taxes, all of us do it, I do. So the problem with that is, is that any increases, when you have a low percent, like, if your, if your mill rate's at five and it goes up 3%, that's a huge percentage, you know, in comparison, that's 60%, you know, that increase. When you have a higher, uh, mill rate and it goes up 2%, it's gonna be a smaller, uh, or 3%, it's gonna be a smaller impact. All of these things were true, and I told people, we acknowledged their frustrations, we said, we share them with you. We just wanted to make sure we were helping people understand that. The biggest piece for us was to make sure they knew we were transparent with our communications, sort of referendum, that this percentage increase was not based solely upon the, on the referendum passing, uh, for those folks. Okay, next slide, please. So, I talked about this earlier, the mill rate's lower, but with the significant increases from 2021 and now in equalized property value, the tax impact is higher. So even though the percent is lower, when you have your value, for some of the folks, they, their equalized property value had gone up, uh, $180,000 over three years. The state had raised their equalized property value $180,000 over three years. That's gonna have a huge impact on, uh, on that percent, that even though the percent's lower, it's gonna have a larger impact. So this is my, you know, my kind of thing, and I'm gonna talk about, what am I gonna focus on on Friday about communicating? Because many people have asked me, so then what do we do about this? How do we stop it? Uh, how, how do we get this out of control? And I said, this isn't passive, but it's gotta come from state level, it has to come from the state level. Because right now, it's a, it's like blackjack, right, at the casinos, like, you know, they don't do it, the house wins, that's why they, they do it. So, right now, i- it's not, when you see taxes go down, the money's coming from more equalized aid. When taxes go up, it's more local property taxes, less state aid. There's no, it doesn't mean that the districts are getting more money to operate with. So, I would tell you, the biggest pieces that I wanna focus in on, there's a $5.8 billion surplus in the state right now, okay? I know there's been talk about wanting to use that for property, property tax relief. My proposal or idea would be, a one nice way to bring down property taxes, well, the property taxes is to do more shared revenue for the school districts. Because that will lower property taxes and it'll benefit local schools. If you simply are just lowering property taxes by cutting property tax bills, the property tax bills are gonna go down, but it's gonna require, you still have to fund your schools. So that would be a simple proposal, I would say, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that perfect, right? But what I would tell you is, why would they not wanna do that? Because legislators like to take credit for lowering taxes. Right, it's good politics to say, I'm gonna lower taxes. If they give more school, shared revenue, and the taxes, the school taxes go down, it, it's kind of indirect credit for, for the taxes going down, you don't get to claim that tax cuts. So it's not as glamorous as cutting taxes, but it would have the same, the same impact. The other thing would be, get rid of those, or at least adjust those revenue limits that I presented to you all about how there's so many discrepancies between local school districts about the revenue limits. Like, adjust those to the point where you have people on an even playing field, at least a level playing field, where that would allow us. And then more pupil categorical aid, which is the outside the revenue limits, that aid, because there's been very little of that over the last five to six years. Is, those would be things that would have a real impact, and then I will talk about, Danny knows this, in the budget proposals right now is funding of special education service. It's expensive to service students with disabilities, it's required by law. Well, Danny and Pam, what's it supposed to be the target that the state says that they would fund that at?
33%.
Well, what, that's what they're doing right now.
That's what they're doing right now.
What's that? 90% was the goal, what the state had said that they would fund originally backwards, they would fund. Would fund 90%.
We only get funded at 33%. So that could set some money, we only got like 31.8 or something last year.
Yeah, so, so we're significantly underfunded with our students with disabilities. The, the proposal at the state level right now, refresh my memory, was it 66%?
Significant.
Yeah, I think it was, I think they were trying to double it.
They were gonna double what that funding was, that would have a huge impact on our budget, huge impact. Now the rain on the parade, that's their original proposal, likely not to make it through.
That's the proposal from DPI.
From, from.
From Jill Underling.
Jill Underling, from the.
From DPI.
Yes, correct. And that's gotta go through joint finance and through a lot. So is it likely that's going to, no, it isn't. Are we hoping there's gonna be an increase? Cause even an increase of like 5% to 10% would be significant dollars, because whatever we don't have funded in there has to come from front end, like. So whatever shortfalls we have in special education, we have to fund out of our front end now. So if, if we can get any additional funding, that will have a huge impact on our front end, on our general fund. So, do you wanna, you two wanna add anything? I didn't, I mean, that's.
Like Danny said, hope for the stars and.
Yeah.
You know.
We'll take the clothes.
We'll take the, take the lower level, if we get some kind of any increase would be nice.
Cause those, like, to what to watch for, when you see the budget proposals being kicked around, like, what are things that, because like, I know last year, everybody got excited that didn't understand what it meant when Governor Evers signed that, changed the, the line item to say, you know, the 350 for 400 years. And everybody's like, oh, yeah, and Pam and I were like, whoop-de-doo, because we weren't gonna be able to take it all because of our revenue limits. And it just, it was like, it looked really good on paper to be like, wow, this is a really pro education, no, it was not, it, it was not. So that, that's something that, it's got that non-categorical aid is outside the revenue limits, which means we can take that. When you see that, if it's not, the, I'm sorry, categorical aid is outside the revenue limits. If you see those numbers, say like $250 per student categorical aid, that means we would be able to take $250 per student of categorical aid and take it all, outside the revenue limits. So that, that's why not all, when you, we see this stuff being kicked around, so I'm really gonna hone in on that idea of the, the idea of we really need that categorical aid outside the limits, or we need to raise the limits, or both, I'm gonna be asking for too much. If you wanna raise the limits or both. Now, here, here's why that shared revenue is so important, because the, the, the real thing about shared revenue not just levying more in taxes is, if we're levying more in local taxes, taxes are going up. Shared revenue keeps local taxes down, that's why we're saying, release some of that $5.8 billion to shared revenue. Lower property taxes across the state, like, it'll lower property taxes everywhere, you can give everybody more, you can give everyone more, they're a high, uh, they're a property rich district, give them more. But give the districts like Pittsville that are higher poverty rate, give, give us a little bit more, you know, to level that playing field a little bit. Because, you know, we've often talked about, what's the biggest, what's the biggest limitation with school funding is it's based on students per pupil? Cause I've said this often, you lose 10 students to enrollment, that's gonna have a huge impact on your school funding. But if it's one person per grade level, it doesn't mean we're laying off that, so that's hypothetically three teaching positions. But if it's one student per grade level, we're not gonna be laying off teachers. It just means we're out $150,000 and it's over a three year rolling average, but we're out a lot of money that we lose that revenue tied into students. Now, if you are losing students, if your enrollment goes half over a five year period, obviously, would you then probably require less? Yes, but what we're not seeing that, what we're seeing is stable to slightly declining enrollment, which is, I would argue is one of the worst places to be in. Is if you're just kind of there and you're fluctuating with zero. Cause if you are declining at a decent rate, you get declining enrollment aid, you get extra aid for declining enrollment. Yes, I know, Chris, that's a look I get when I look at it. So like, if you're declining enough, state makes up your shortfalls, but if you're not declining enough, you don't get it. So, so it's, it is, uh, I, I would tell you, school funding, um, and I don't envy the legislature, like, it, it's darn near impossible to come up with something that's gonna please everyone, right? Like, like you, you just can't, because you're going to have people in different parts of the state that have their wish list. Right? The districts that that are winners in this system, their legislators do not want to see the formula change. So if you are a district where when when that shared revenue is going to districts that are considered high poverty districts that are that are probably, those representatives don't want to change the formula. They want more money to go there. But when it's like, I don't think anybody is going to, when when we talk about like property rich districts, no one's going to be like, oh, yeah, you know what, we're talking about Heartland, Pewalki, Pittsville. Now, there's a lot of land up here, it's beautiful hunting land, but no one would tell you this is a property rich school district. Like, that's just not what the idea of your county or.
Is there a margin for sparsity aid besides seven hundred twenty thousand dollars? Because you're like, can we just get seven hundred twenty thousand less?
Less.
That's not sparsity aid, that's general equalized.
That's just general aid. We do get sparse, we do get sparsity aid.
So what the generally that we lost is based on being more property rich?
Correct, because our property values went up twenty six percent. So there's a formula, there's three levels of formula, primary, secondary, and tertiary.
Like a pretty easy fix would be changing levels of this formula to.
Yes, correct.
Yes, maybe you should go to office.
We've talked about this for many years.
But it's like, because you just said, we're not property rich, but forty percent are property rich.
But they don't, they don't want, so so half of the legislators in the state, their their districts and areas they represent don't want to change it because they benefit. What you see is you have the half and the half not because of this. And I'm just going to tell you, am I biased because I'm from a small rural school district? Do you want to know who the ones that get hammered the hardest on this are small rural school districts? Okay, because for us, when you lose that aid, when you lose ten students, you lose that, that's a huge impact. If you're in a larger district and you lose twenty students, you'll just stick thirty six kids in a class a call a day and be like, yeah, like I'll lay five teachers off and I'll stick thirty six kids in an English class. We can't, we can't do things like that. So we're, our margin is so small. And and with our tax base here, we're not a lot of businesses, right? In in town, so when you see a hit like this, it impacts residential taxpayers disproportionately. Because if we had a bunch of large businesses, you know, like like corporations, whatever it may be and stuff, the impact on the residential taxpayers would be lessened. But here in Pittsville, the majority of the taxpayers are property owners, right? Landowners. Many, many of the people we heard from were who don't live in the district are landowners. They don't have land up here, right? That we're calling, so that that's the way the system is set up, Nate, exactly like Pam said. Like, we still get, like, like the year before, Pam, don't quote my numbers on this, but you might be able to. I believe we got an increase of like three hundred thousand dollars in equalized.
Right, that was part of Governor Evers lowering the taxes because he increased state aid to lower property taxes. And he increased the the school tax credit on the property tax bills.
Yeah.
So if you notice, a lot of people went up like twenty to fifty bucks on their state tax credit on their property tax bill.
So those, they were things that were done to try to lower property taxes and get more money in schools. So that, so the year before, that we got an increase, which that helped lower that mill rate down to five point one eight. But then it was, that was gone, plus to get to seven twenty, where they they went in the opposite direction. So really, a difference effectively of over a million dollars between what the drop was and the raise was, if you talk about from year to next.
Right, I think it actually was one point two seven five.
One point two billion dollar difference from one year to the next, where they gave us more, then they took that, plus. It it just, it it's, it's frustrating just because there's so many components that it it. This is such a stressful time of the year for us to wait and see. First, we're looking at our enrollment. Like, that's the first thing we're looking at. Like, Deb's giving me projections on the second, third Friday count, telling me like, this is what it looks like for students. And then Pam's waiting for preliminary and the projections to come in and what the state's going to do. And we only know proposals. We won't know until October, probably, what the final numbers are. And that'll be for this, because we're in the second year of a budget, so this next one is going to be for the next two years. And it's always, this is the worst year, at least with the first year, when they pass a budget, we know for two years, at least we know our numbers. Now, it's like, we got to wait and see. We don't know for for this next year or, you know, the year after. But we will have some certainty, but we have to project some things based upon some things that are unknown. The projections for the next two years are a slight increase in in equalized aid. Like a slight increase, but nothing significant. Now, Pam, what kind of things could impact that?
Quite honestly, the Joint Finance Committee just striking it. I mean, they did last year, there were, or the last, you know, budget. There was a lot of really good things that would have benefited. One of us is special education funding, and they shrunk it down and gave us the one and a half percent.
You know, I I think it's difficult to speculate on what we have here, there, or the next thing. I think at this point in time, in January, February, March, and April, and May of of an odd numbered year, is to help local residents be able to tell their story. And we've chatted about this a little bit before, you know, legislators are used to hearing from paid lobbyists. And then when it comes to school people, they're used to hearing from superintendents, the School Board Association, and, you know, again, kind of the upper echelon. They're not used, yeah, right. You know, it's the people that get paid. Yeah, they get paid to do this stuff, you know? And not that we get paid a lot of school board members. But who they don't usually hear for are regular people who say, this is what my tax bill looks like. And I know this formula is broken. And, you know, we still need to look at probably three talking points. And I think by February, we should be able to have some materials ready that we can challenge our, well, challenge, ask our people that, you know, are ticked off. A lot of them had an opportunity to listen to when we went and did our our road shows. And they said, well, this is crazy. And it's like, yes, but people like you need to talk to your legislators, not just people like us. The role of administrators, the role of school board members is really, really important. But who they're really going to listen to is regular taxpayers that say, this is crazy, guys, inhale, fix it. And it wouldn't hurt to have a few students also say.
So one of my upcoming communications in the paper is going to be related to sharing some information that if if folks are so inclined that they could reach out. These were four things that I put on the agenda for, I wanted to make sure we had some things. Because if we're all over the board and if we're listing seventeen things, Patrick and Scott are not going to agree to that, right? To hone in on four things and to give them some concrete examples of how would this impact Pittsville, these four specific things. As what I would say is, we're a typical rural, small school district, was the revenue limits we talked about, that per pupil categorical aid, the private school voucher reimbursements, we've talked about that before. Pam, what was that number this year? One eighty?
Yeah, the spot.
It was, it was. Yeah, so we 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 were, we lost a hundred eighty thousand dollars like for funding for vouchers that we are not. That one of the big talking points is we can't verify, we don't get names, addresses, we just get a bill.
For that money and then the state gives it to the private schools.
Yes, without verification on it. And so we can't verify there are students. And there are students that move, like, I will just tell you from twenty six years or twenty nine years of doing this, families sometimes will move school districts and not update addresses. So like, it's like hard to tell without verifying sometimes if students are still your resident students or not. Like, our own students, I mean, like, families will move, be like, I didn't know I needed to tell you that we moved into the Marshall School District, yeah? We need to know that because that changes your enrollment status. So that that was a big, you know, that was a big piece. I believe it was approximately a hundred eighty thousand.
The state voucher system cost us a hundred eighty thousand this year?
That's accurate.
And actually, you know, if you look at those WASB resolutions, one of them is decoupling the public school funding and the voucher school funding. Because right now, it comes out of the same pot. What WASB is on record as saying is, we need to decouple this. Now, my question is, does this have legs? Do you know, you know, paid lobbyists? Is there anyone in the legislature that's willing to champion this? What's this, what's the opportunity for this to be brought in front of joint finance? Because it would be a joint finance question. So that's one of the things I'd like to follow on.
And that's, that's a great point. But you know, I want to be very clear, I'm all about school choice, about parent choice. Like, parents should be able to choose. What I'm talking about, and that's why I love that Mary Ann referenced that, I'm talking about that decoupling piece. I love it. That's actually the first I've heard of that is, don't have it be either or, don't take from the public, like, funded, fund people that have that choice, but don't pull that out fully, like, that's every dollar following a student out of the public schools, which is that it's, I mean, that's three teaching positions, effectively, a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And that that makes it, that makes it tough when we're working on tight budgets like we are. So thank you for that point. And then the special education reimbursement, those were like, what would be, I felt like even three, tried to limit it to three, but I was like, these are four babies. Like, these would, these four things would have a dramatic impact on our budget. If they even did anything, yeah, if they did, and we're not asking for the moon. It's like, even if any movement is made in in a positive sense on these, will have a huge impact on our on our budget here in Pittsfield. So so those were, I just wanted to kind of talk to the board about what what have we been hearing from folks? How have we been kind of addressing and the big pieces? We've taken the time to sit down, whether it's a phone call, a meeting in person, or an email and respond to every single person that contacted us over the last month, either Pam or I, or sometimes both, have reached out and communicated multiple times. So we we wanted to make sure that if people have follow up questions, keep asking and we'll keep answering and and tell. And and I I often, this is what people have said, I'm not happy, but I understand it a little bit better now. Like, people are still, like, this is a stressful situation for people. And very valid point brought up by a taxpayer last week to me. Like, even if I would have known and had a little more time about this, and you know how we talk about this, what are you doing November referendum? It's on your tax bill that month, is, yep, but there's just, this is just the way it works where it's levied. It's it's on, we haven't even received the fund, like, we haven't received the funding yet.
Just started getting checks today.
Yeah, so so that was a valid point brought up by taxpayers, is like, it's just a big, you know, it's a sudden increase. So right now, the one thing I I've also reiterated people is, the first year is going to be your biggest hit. Like, I can't tell you what equalized property values are going to do next year. Could the state come in and hit us twenty five percent again? I I would, I don't want to say, no, I don't think so. And the first year of a referendum is always going to be your biggest hit. And and that's very, you know, clear when you see the increases. So what I said to folks, because one person said, I can't take another one like this next year. I said, well, it won't be this. And I went over the projections of, this was the big hit, it was always going to be, it was made worse by that loss of state aid. But the next year, was it thirteen dollars? Next year, I believe.
Thirteen on to.
On to this, but correct, but still, but thir- only thirteen added on to that, meaning that, yes, they're going to stay, they're not going to go down. But with a slight increase in equalized aid next year, once again, could they go down? Yeah, it could actually go down again. School taxes could go down again next year. So you won't see this type of an increase next year.
But the the hit will still be the same.
The hit will be the same. The the money that was on there this year, that stays. Yep, it just, the percentage increase will not be the same. It might be actually in a decrease slightly.
Maybe a little.
Or it's going to be mostly flat. And that I can say for the school side, I'm pretty, pretty confident in saying that. But what could impact that is if the state, I don't know if they decide they want to come in and and say that the our our forty acres, all of a sudden, they found oil or something, that they need to add another two hundred thousand dollars of equalized property value.
So others questions for Jason? Is anyone able to attend this besides me?
Yes.
Okay.
I will also do that.
Okay, great. Ooh, we have a forum for Friday? Yeah, for Friday. Yep.
So we'll just post it as no business will be conducted, but.
Yeah, but meeting with legislators. Okay, that sounds great.
And I plan on sharing with Patrick and Scott's office has just given a bullet point of these things that we want to talk, kind of want to talk about. And obviously, they're probably going to have some questions for us. I want to talk about things from their their perspective and their. So and I like to promote, like, I I like to say, I did say this, both their offices, like, we're we're doing, you know, our academic scores. We're in the top eleven percentile in state with our scores, and we're doing more with less right now. And and we don't want to put a further burden on our property taxpayers, and we think we're doing pretty good things here in Pittsfield. It's kind of been my message.
Good, good. Okay, let's move along. Item B is our multipurpose education foundation committee meeting.
We have a date.
We have, we do?
Yes, Deb is going to share the doodle poll.
Gosh, I hope my schedule hasn't changed. So scheduled this out.
So now everybody was able to connect to.
On Wednes, this Wednesday.
From five to seven P M. Oh, what do you mean, oh? Did it change? You're going to New Orleans, aren't you?
Well, that's not this, oh, no, Dan, there's a cancer benefit.
Five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we could move the time if we needed to. That was just the date that all of us were able to identify.
Okay.
That worked.
And Julie didn't want to go, correct?
What's that?
Julie didn't want to be on this, correct?
Julie, she said she did not need to be, need to be on it, no.
Okay, so another one to to notice.
Yes.
As as a meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why you're painting box press.
What are you guys laughing about? You have to call it both of them. Just kidding. Kidding.
Yeah, if you guys want to come because you're interested.
Yeah, he'll be in here.
He'll be in here, okay.
Deb, can you reserve the, no, no one should be in here, but please reserve it for that.
That would be great.
And Deb will send him right away. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, item C, legal counsel. There's been a change with our attorney relationship. For years, we've had Tony Rennig, Rennig.
Louis.
Louis.
And Lacy.
And Lacy. Tony Rennig, I think, as everyone knows, tragically died from cancer recently. And so it's just like we did a couple of years ago with the bank. You know, there is an opportunity if we want to look at other options for legal counsel. Thoughts?
Yeah, I've handed a pamphlet, or actually a folder here, it'll, looking into one option that we may have or be interested in. And this is the recent Rover, Von Reisen Law Office. And an individual attorney by the name of James Macy came kind of recommended to me. And I just reached out to him, asked if he could provide us with some information on their law firm, what they provide for school districts. And kind of said, we're looking at cost saving efforts. And that's kind of where I want to, I I think, you know, seeing as we're trying to be responsible with, when we spend our money and everything. I'd like to just do a comparison with this law office along with kind of compare it to what we have now with Rennig, Lacy, or I said, Rennig.
Louis.
Yeah, just do some comparisons. Couple of highlights on on this law firm. Is one of the things I found interesting is that they they have a flat hourly rate that's billed in one tenth increments. And so I just, and I I don't, I'd like to know the breakdown of of what our cost is at this point. And then all that information is shared in this folder here.
So my understanding is there are three law firms in the state that specialize.
Specialized in ed- in education, like educational law. I'm not going to tell you, there couldn't be small, but but Von Reisen, Bornman and Clark, and Rennig, Louis, and Lacy are the three that I'm aware of. And the three primaries that represent the majority of school districts.
Okay, well, Riley and Crane used to.
And that may be.
That may be, yeah, okay. I think, you know, what we did with the with the the bank situation is we invited people to respond to a request for information. And I I think there may be, what do I want to say, ethical, maybe even legal things where we need to reach out to another firms and give them the option as to whether or not they want to respond.
I think that would be the, what I would be looking for from the board tonight to give direction is if you want to proceed with getting a request for, Pam, I don't want to, it's not true, it's about a request for a proposal.
We would have to do RFPs.
RFPs, and we would do a request for a proposal to break down, like, I would give you an example, like, what Chris just talked about is relevant. Is that by the, Chris, what'd you say about a?
Tenth of an hour.
Tenth of an hour, because I would tell you typically with legal firms, it's quarter, it's in fifteen minute increments. Now, you may say, ah, what's that? That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money with our legal bills we get. It's, you know, because sometimes, honestly, it's just a phone call. I make a phone call for five minutes. because sometimes, honestly, it's just a phone call, I make a phone call for five minutes, it's billed for a quarter of an hour. Um, and, and so, if the board wants to do that, what would, what would happen is, is I, I would look and find out, get a list of any of the ones, what I would say is it would be very important to stick to school, that, that have areas, that departments that specialize in school law, because just like school finance, school law is a really, really different bird when it comes to a lot of things, so, if the board gives that direction, I would, um, much like, that looks like what Chris has got here is they did an RFP, is I would reach out to Rennig, Louis and Lacy, and I could give the board a list of, here's law firms that specialize in school law, and then we could get three bits, four bits, five, in my opinion, if we were gonna go out and look, there would be no reason to not go past a wide net and look. Um, the, the, uh, I, I just don't think there's very many in the state that do specialize, I, I couldn't tell you the exact number, but there's, there's some big ones that represent the majority of the districts, so, so this is more, I'm looking for direction from the board, if this is something you wanna proceed with, we can't, I would be remiss if I didn't say an advantage to staying with Rennig, Louis and Lacy, is they've had a long relationship with the district, um, so they know, like, they know our district, they know, know us, and with Tony, it hurts Louis and Tony, because Tony was our, uh, primary representative, uh, that being said, they also may much like associated, even going out for RFPs is a good thing, because potentially, it doesn't hurt to tell people, hey, show us, you love us, uh, that they may come in and maybe they, if the board decided they wanted to after the proposals, they with Rennig, maybe they lower their increments down, so, I, I think it doesn't hurt, it does not hurt.
Yes, yes.
Even before we would get, like, to talk to people, do you have like a breakdown, like, of how much money we spent on the?
I, I would have to pull that.
No, no, no.
Right, we would have to pull, well, we would have that, but we have to kinda be careful, because once we, we don't wanna start asking just verbally for RFPs, because there's a process, we have to advertise, and there's lots of legal.
So, tonight, you would be looking for more or less consent from the board, if they would like us to pursue that? Is that accurate, you said? Your hand.
Yeah, oh, this is just, well, well, Riley, yeah, I know, because I've worked with them in the past. Um, but yeah, so, the, the question really is, what, what do people think about throwing the net out there and seeing what comes in?
From the outset, I think it's a good idea, I mean, everything I use, I call, um, once a year, different rates on everyone, so, I think it's a good idea, but like, but I don't know what the process is, is this like hundreds of hours of work?
Well, it'll be several hours, yeah, a couple of days worth probably, because you have to do the RFP, you have to send it out, you have to, you know, there's timelines and.
Yeah, so, I mean, if it's a long process, I think if we have, the one we have, the one Chris already did much of, like, we're kind of like, one or two others, I don't know.
Well, if we do one RFP, we're tall.
Yeah, we have to offer off, yeah.
They, they choose response.
Correct, but yeah, some firms may not have room to take on new clients.
Yep.
Yeah, well, and still, we would still need to, I, I think legally send it out to fundraiser.
We'd have to post it.
We'd, right, right, you have to advertise it, put it on the website, personal invitation, send to different firms, that type of thing.
Yeah.
I, I don't, Pam was right, it would take some time, but obviously, if we were able to realize the cost savings, you know, related to, in some years with legal bills, as we all know, some years there's more than others, right? If you have significant situations, you're gonna have more, but we could probably get an average, but look and see what its cost is.
Well, you know, the other thing, we have been with Rennig for a long time, and, and I don't have anything against him, but, you know, as Nate said, it's worth shopping around and seeing what else is out there, and I think that this also is more evidence to our community that we're serious about managing costs, and I think that's an important message to get to our community. Yeah, it's gonna take some time, but I would anticipate that, like we did with the, um, with the bank thing, is we had a, a small subgroup of board members, Julie and I looked at all the data, um, from the banks, and so, I would anticipate that we would need, um, you know, one or two board members to be willing to look at the comparison data.
And I would assume the same process is that we would invite the, whichever firms, then coming here with a presentation to the board.
We could choose to do that.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if we have to do that, but we could choose.
If the board wants, saw value in that, I think there's value in having.
Yeah, yeah, and then our student representatives could have an opportunity to learn about procurement of legal services.
Well, the.
Yes. Well, they might need a will someday, or something like that, so, yeah.
So, I, I guess, just looking for consent here, was this listed as an action item, Deb? Yeah, so, we're just looking for consent from the board to.
I think everybody seems to agree.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
I think it's a wise move, thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing this forward, Chris. Okay, let's go on to item D, liquidated damages contract language.
So, we, uh, thank you, Deb, for creating this document, we, we got some comparatives from local districts, both with their language and with the dollar amounts, so, uh, just for the board review, because I know this was a discussion, the board wanted to talk about liquidated damages, I would start by saying if we, in, in, and there was discussion of potentially getting rid of liquidated damages, I would be vehemently opposed to that, because I believe we'd probably be one of the only districts in the state to not have any, if the board wanted to look at the level with these comparatives and get more in line with, you know, that would be something I think would make sense to discuss, but, uh, as far as eliminating them completely, I would be, I would strongly recommend that the board not consider eliminating liquidated damages. So, uh, you had a chance to look at the comparatives, I assume, if not, we can briefly go, if you wanna go over, um, briefly, the, the amounts, the language in general is pretty much the same, it's all about dates, so, the idea behind liquidated damages, uh, it may be more for the public, um, is, is if you're signing the contract, if you break the contract earlier, the liquidated damages are, are less, and it's, it's meant to be a deterrent, but also, um, you know, a matter of, like, kind of a commitment to the contract, the closer it gets into the year or the school year, the higher they usually are graduated in districts, because the harder it becomes for, for the district to replace, you know, um, folks. Now, some districts, um, we are not one, and I agree with that, is that Pittsville has historically said, like, you will have teachers who wanna come to your district that ask if we will pay liquidated damages, and, um, my understanding is, we've talked to the board previously, that we would not, that would not be a Pandora's box I would wanna open, is covering liquidated damages for a teacher, for someone to come to us, but that's, you're seeing that a lot, where districts, our, our other districts are hiring teachers and they pay their liquidated damages, um, I think that, if you wanna talk about waiving liquidated damages, being a mess, paying liquidated damages for people coming into me is a mess times ten that I would not wanna get involved with, so, but, uh, if we wanna discuss the levels, the comps are up there, and I would say these are pretty, there are some districts I know, like, like, if you were to go more out of our net, like I try to stay local, there's some that have like, their ten thousand dollars, the liquidated damages are ten thousand dollars, I would say a good comparison is what are our neighbors doing, and that's why we pull these districts.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Deb, for taking the time to find out this information. Um, my biggest takeaway from this is that our highest level of four thousand dollars is no one else has it that high.
Like the previous X three?
Yeah, the others three.
One, three, the rest are twos, there's the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I, um, I personally think that there would be value in getting rid of the four thousand dollars as, as the top liquidated.
Then you'd wanna get rid of the thirty-five hundred also.
Uh, yes, I could actually see going with one thousand, two thousand, three thousand. Just round numbers, keep it simple, and play with the dates.
Pam, question, if the board were to move to change these, they would not, they would not be in effect until the next contract.
Correct, the next.
Correct.
Next, next contract, it'd be for next year.
Can I just say, kind of, why we upstem previously? When we started front-loading our HSAs, because we were front-loading those in July, so, there was a lot of people, we had already paid the full two thousand dollars for family for an HSA, when we started doing that, and then if somebody left that money was in their account, we had no way to get it back. That happened, that's why that was up to four thousand, when it got so close to the end, plus, we were sending teachers to trainings, so like now, we're doing letters training and stuff like that during the summer, we had a lot of cost invested, or they're setting up their curriculum, so we have cost invested in the new employees as well, that usually, you know, it's not, not always, a lot of times, it's the new staff person that signs that contract, because they're hired in March, that then finds something a little sweeter, sort of closer to home, whatever, that ends up leaving.
Why should we be discussing incentivizing our staff to leave? I'm a little confused on that, I mean.
I don't, it's not, I don't think it's really incentivizing, we're getting more in line with everybody else, this could be the challenge, like, get hired, if we have hired liquidated damages.
Well, so, you think that if somebody sees that they're gonna be paying two thousand dollars versus four thousand dollars, they say, ah, I don't think I'm applying.
I'm saying if they could choose between the two, like, if it's us or apples.
And when they leave here to go somewhere else, at the four thousand, we're not getting a positive review from a teacher, which, which will cost us.
We, we wanna make them stick around, so, you know, I mean, stick around, it's gonna cost you this much, I mean.
I don't want anybody to stick around who doesn't wanna be here.
I'm more in Chris's camp, I'm just, just to be clear with you, is that, this is the way I look at it, is that, like, there are gonna be unique situations that pop up, that someone takes a, but if someone, like, for me, if someone's taking a parallel job, so if they're leaving our school district to take the same job in another school district, like, to me, that, that's why we have a high liquidated damages, if there's extenuating circumstances, like, I would think of an example, because we have the ability, the board does to waive, let's say, a, an elderly parent becomes ill and needs care, and a teacher comes to us and says, I have an opportunity to take a job in Phillips, my parents live up there, my, my father is terminal, I wanna go up, to me, that is, like, that is a life circumstance, then we can waive that, but I'm more with Chris's, that to me, and in not, no offense to the board members, but, like, when I'm looking, like, like, my liquidated damages as district administrator would make these look like, like coins, right? But when I was doing my contract, it was, I, I have no intent of, like, I get it, I have no intent of leaving, so I understand, and I'm with Chris's, that I, I don't know if that's gonna deter someone from taking a job, I'm not saying it couldn't, but I, I like, if the board wants to, if the majority board wants to lower these, I, I, it's not like I'm gonna lose sleep over it, but I'm also on the page of, I, I don't think this is like, when you, if you wanna talk about things that would keep people from coming to work here, or, I, I don't think this ranks very high up on the list of things for staff, for staff morale or anything, like, I don't think, like, our existing staff are like, you know, I'm, I'm kinda unhappy because liquidated damages, I'd kinda be like, well, if we got bigger fish to fry, I'm worried about why they're gonna leave than our liquidated damages, so that, that's my kind of sense on the subject.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to say, we should never, don't, I mean, present a set by half, we're just gonna have to talk a little bit.
What if, what about that situation I shared with you, Nate, that, and I mean, legit, legitimately, a person, a teacher's like, I love it here in Pittsville, my, like, my parents can't afford, you know, like, hospice care, I'm going up to take care of, that's why I like that flexibility of.
We're not necessarily saying that we would, you know, even in various tough situations, and we would waive the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right.
And you could waive the rest, yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's also, I think.
This gives us more discretion.
This is true. Um, the other thing is, yeah, and I always think it should be up to the board, other, there should always be some board flexibility, I believe. Um, I think also, some of this relates to, um, difficult to fill positions, I mean, if, there are some positions that are very, very different, music, um, manufacturing, automotive, you know, things like that, you can't just pick people up off the street.
And it covers the sub-costs and things during that time, transition, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
And, you know, another thing to keep in mind is the fact that a lot of these schools are paying these, it's like, what, what'd you call it?
It's a great point.
Because.
Yeah, they're putting, they're covering liquidated.
And it's coming right back to this pot.
Well, it's, it's, it's just, to Chris's point, if someone's trying to hire one of our people, when you gotta fork over four grand, that's a little bit different than a thousand, where it's maybe less likely they would cover, now, I'm also the opinion, I want someone to be here, I don't want them to.
Right, they are covering those costs.
Yeah, and, and if.
They want them to pay, if it's four grand or one grand, they don't.
But I want them to have less money, so, enough scam money, so, if they're gonna do that, I don't want someone who doesn't wanna be here, but I would like them to be here till the end of the year, at least to allow us time, like, if it, if it deters them, at least for three months or four months, I, you know, that's helpful for us, so.
I see reason.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, we don't have to do it until the end of the year.
Right, we go for the, during the annual meeting, we'll adjust and stuff.
Contracts will be coming out, but.
Oh, that's right, Pam's gotta read out my trade, of course, I was wrong, I guess.
Yeah, we'll be processing contracts at the end of April, because they need to be out by May.
That's a good one.
Okay.
Because that, no, we, we could amend contracts, we've done it before, but not gonna wanna re-.
We could, but if someone wanted out, then at that point, I don't know what, what the legality is with that.
Don't they have till June fifteenth?
To, to commit it to us, but we need to get it to them by May.
Right, right.
So.
But if they sign it, oh yeah, ours is, if you sign it, you can do well.
Okay, so, if contracts go out in mid-April, we could defer this until another board meeting. This is just a discussion item tonight, um, or a for information only item?
And I, I don't want the board, so this is, you didn't ask for my input, but I'm gonna give it to you, because I'm your employee. I don't know if this is a, it'll, like, I feel like we're in kind of a sweet spot here, like, these are good numbers, they're high enough, they're a deterrent, I don't know with all the other considerations the board has to take on, like, I, I would tell you, my opinion is district commissary, these are good numbers, it's, the language is good, it gives flexibility to the board, I don't know if the board would need to tackle this with either as far as raising them or lowering them, I think, like, I think it's pretty good, right, where it's at, if the board was comfortable with staying with that, if in the future we wanted to revisit it, if we started seeing an issue, we could certainly revisit it.
I think we have bigger fish to fry.
So.
Unless then.
This seems like it might be a, a solution in search of a problem, I don't know, to me, a little bit, you know what I mean? It's good, it's, it's a good discussion, it's a good discussion, I just feel like, you know, it's good to get the comps, I, it was actually beneficial to me to see these comps, so.
Any other thoughts, comments, do we wanna bring this back before April, or do we want to just let her go for right now?
I mean, I personally find Nicole, but, you, Julie, she can have six, like, they can just.
We can always bring it back up.
We can always bring it back up on another, another agenda.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, again, comps are always interesting, just like casting a net for attorneys, right? Okay, board goals, um, we have been doing pretty good on these, um, you know, we nailed the first one, we're working on, which is the referendum, um, number two, supplemental revenue, we're moving forward on that, number three, development, strength and community partnerships, um, I, we're making progress on that, and I would really like to talk more about that in a, in a future, um, board retreat, right now, I'd like to jump to number four, because if we're going to make any changes, we, we need to get rolling soon. Um, and number four is deanalyze childcare availability and financial sustainability of the Pittsfield Childcare Center, and I would like to ask if, um, what board member can take the lead on this?
I would be going to, I mean, you've been here just a little bit.
Okay.
So, Nate and I would then, if Nate, if the, Nate is gonna be the board member, you and I would work together, we have a committee, Pam, Tabaka, and, and we've already begun gathering data, financial data, and other data, is that we would set up some meetings and discuss it, and eventually come with some proposals to the board, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you very much, Nate, I appreciate you coming to anything else. Okay, next, uh, future board retreat, we met in September, and, um, afterwards, the consensus was, let's do this again in like six months.
Well, probably not this week.
No, not this week.
I was gonna say.
No, Wes did. I was gonna say, no, Wes did.
So our folks came? If so, we can have Deb send out one of those wonderful little doodle polls again for possibly sometime in February, short month.
Did we last time, did we do it after the regular meeting? Did we do it on the same night, after the regular meeting?
No, we didn't.
Okay, separate night.
I would not support that.
I also would not support that, but you're the board president, so it's very important when it comes to supporting it.
No, the board is more important, you need a fresh mind to do something like that. So, Deb, would you send out a doodle poll?
Wednesday's worked best for everybody right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so. Wonderful, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, now we're ready to move on to the real meaty stuff. And check, item number 10 is discussion and action items. We have a number of policies, second readings, first readings, and policies to be deleted. First of all, the second readings, update to policy 343.4 exhibit, here are a notice of educational options. Any questions, concerns, or are we able to go ahead and approve this? If not, entertain a motion.
How many motions does that, the second reading, approve 343.4?
Second.
A second motion to approve it?
It's been moved and seconded to approve 343.4 exhibit on favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, new policy, 361.1, selection of textbooks and other classroom instructional materials and resources, 361.1 rule, and 361.1 exhibit. These, my understa, I recall, are all policies that are updated, and they relate to the deletions that we're gonna have later on. It's really a policy cleanup, delete the old stuff and put it into a new one. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Approve policy 361 on selection of textbooks and other classroom instructional materials and resources?
Second.
Do you want to make a motion to approve all three of them at once?
All three are related.
Yeah.
Partly deleted.
The policy, the rule, and the exhibit.
Correct. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve all three at once.
Okay, second.
That's a lot of reading.
Okay, it's been seconded to accept the second reading and approve policy 361.1 and its associated rule and exhibit. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, then we have a new policy, 361.2. Policy 361.2 rule and 361.2 exhibit. Questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to...
I do have a comment or a question, I guess, here. So these, these new policies, these are, like we had mentioned, the cleanup for what we're about to talk about later on here. Do you know, I go through these, I go through these policies, and when it comes to especially like this library media center material, you know, speaking about how books come in and how they're reviewed, I guess, basically what my understanding is, is a lot of this stuff can come through and not be questioned until maybe a parent makes a complaint, and then goes through this form of a complaint procedure. Is that, is that what you guys all think out of this? Because I mean, I don't know that many people are gonna be reviewing a lot of these materials that come into our library center. And the only way that I see that possibly, like if a book came in with some type of inappropriate illustrations, profanity, or diagrams or something, it would have to be picked up by a parent or a concerned individual in the community that has stakes or ties to this school district.
I don't know if this is policy or habit, but we did a community with a lot of people about what's appropriate, they were just...
The thing we brought in, yeah.
That's, isn't, don't we put that in practice?
There was age level appropriate materials in the library, and I will say this, there was a significant weeding that took place last year in the lab. Like, both of the facilities, the high school had been done more recently, but they went through weeded materials, and that was part of that process, was determining. There were some materials that were considered that were not in line with that age-appropriate material that was rectified in that situation.
Okay, that's where I was going with this. I wanted to rest assured, you know, we have this under section F of it, we have this weeding.
It took place, it hadn't taken place, it took place last year and it was extensive. We brought Cheryl Ashbeck actually in to help. It was like a weeks-long process that took place to go through the libraries, to go through the...
Wonderful.
Yes.
Well, it's ultimately gonna...
Well, I would tell you, the building, like, here's what it comes down to, is the library, the library media specialist in the library, like, they order materials, like, any materials that are used in classrooms and stuff, that, like, those materials are approved by the board, those go by the board, like, represented. The materials in the library, they go through an ordering process. And like, the ability administrators have access to like the materials that are ordered and stuff. So Chris, you are right, like, if a particular thing comes home to a parent, they fill out that form to appeal or to complain, that's accurate. Am I gonna tell you that the principals review every single book that's ordered by the board? I do know we do not.
Because there's so many, I mean...
Yeah, we do not.
One, because looking at what, when you make a determining factor, my God, there's so many different avenues that one could make an argument against.
Yes.
And, you know, it depends on the chances you want to take. But I see that this weeding process is very important.
That weeding process was absolutely essential too. There was determination made during that weeding, that they found materials that should not have been in, like, early adolescent materials, that was discovered during the weeding process. There were some, and that was related to the Human Growth Development Committee's determination of this is what age-appropriate materials are. That was, last year, it was an extensive process that was long overdue, and there was a lot of materials removed from the library. I don't know, Pam, do you remember the last time the library had been weeded? It was like seven years.
I actually don't know.
It was six or seven years, so...
And then do, have you seen complaints come in from parents?
I have not, there's been none of principals receiving them before me, are you aware of any?
So, and I would expect that to be that way, because I don't know how many parents or children bring their books home, if there's something in their kind of sketchy that they're gonna show their parents, you know what I'm saying? That's why the weeding process is very important.
Yeah, and I think our, and it's also on our LMCs to help students choose age-appropriate materials.
That's the other thing, age-appropriate, insert sections and monitoring.
Yeah. But the weeding, it absolutely was, I would have been in a different, if you would have asked me before that last year, how confident I was, that I wouldn't have been able to tell you very... I'm very confident after that weeding process that...
And I have faith in that, I believe that it's a good process.
And this, these policies, the updates are more in line with where we're at and what we do now, is why, one of the reasons for the change in the policies, is they kind of correlate with what we do.
Then I'll make a motion to accept the second reading and approve 361.2 along with the rule and exhibit.
I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments? That it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of 361.2 and all its assets? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And then we have a new policy to approve, and that is 362, library media services. And this really describes the process of how that part of the school works collaboratively. So, any comments, suggestions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I mean, this is required by, I think we have to have them file the letter of media plan, so, I'm gonna do it.
My motion to approve the new policy 341.1, reading in...
362, or...
362.
362. No, I'm... New policy 362, library media services?
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, any other questions? This is crazy.
Well, I got a few issues here, but I'm okay.
Okay, sure.
Sound good?
Okay, sounds good. All in favor, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving policy 362, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before we get on to the B and the policy first readings, I'm wondering about the relevance of the rest of the agenda for our board, our school reps who may have homework and other things.
I would agree with you, I would tell you, the only thing that I can bring them up to speed on later is the open enrollment space, the ability recommendations.
Okay.
We'll talk about it last Friday, we're going to, okay.
Sounds like the plan, thank you, go get that homework done. Okay. First policy readings. And these are the policies related to supplemental funding outside of taxpayers. We have a number of these here, and there's also the Google Docs below. So I'm gonna refer people to those. I would really like to have some discussion on this. I know we had some discussion last month, but I'm hoping we can continue to discuss. So let's go to policy 840 and 84 rule, which is the gifts to schools and sponsorships. And that is down there. And of course, I, oh, what happened? Deb, it doesn't have, oh, there they are. My comments, yeah, yeah. You know, obviously, I have things I want to talk about. Yeah, it's a little... So, okay, just some of my comments. We're in the second paragraph, you see the highlighted area, in other words, we can't be bribed to change educational programming, which I think is a good thing. Okay, the third paragraph, I just highlighted this, you know, cannot accept gifts or sponsorships without first obtaining the prior specific approval of the board. So we've got acceptance, but one of the things, and again, this goes down to one of the other comments I've made here about adding something about the board being informed prior to solicitation or during communication with a benefactor.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that we put something in here about informing the board ahead of time when these discussions are commencing.
Yeah, so like maybe I changed that last sentence where it says, notwithstanding this delegation, the district administrator may electro-obtain board approval, maybe put some language in there about will inform, inform the board?
Inform the board as discussions progress.
And may, may electro-obtain, even in that situation described above where the discretion lies. I mean, like, I'll be honest with you, any conversations about naming rights and stuff, I'm going to bring that board.
Right, I know.
And let's just put the language where it matches with our practices, yeah.
Right, put the language where it matches the practice, I think. Plus, comments? Am I just being really obtuse here with all these things?
No, I think we essentially make a policy that's probably...
Yeah, I like some of these things in here, you know, sponsorship being defined. Other legal protected standards, you know, why did I do that? I don't know why. This I thought was interesting, we're under, where we go with the first one, two, three. The donor or sponsor contributes a minimum of one-third of the cost of either the construction or facility improvements. And I like the idea of the written agreement, I think that's really, really vital. But what about this contributing a minimum of one-third of the original cost? And why was that so...
Deb, that was the, this was from WASB, right? This, we asked for sample policies from WASB, so this was their recommendation for like an example or ideas for a policy, so I don't think... It was just more or less, Deb went to WASB and said, can you give us some sample policies for these particular things? So, this is what they gave us.
Okay. Personally, I'm usually pretty much in line with what WESB recommends, so that answers my question.
In my opinion is, when you're talking about naming rights to a facility, it should be a significant contribution before you get your name.
Slapped on that.
Slapped on something.
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing I think that's real important to know in here is no district employee shall solicit specific donations or sponsorship without first obtaining approval. And, you know, I'm thinking, without obtaining approval of the administrator, no offense, but I think you could, you know, the school district is small, I think you could strike building principal or his/her immediate supervisor.
Yeah, I think just district administrator would be sufficient there.
Okay, one last thing on you guys' to-do list.
Is this as simple as like asking somebody for high school certificates or...
Well, I think that's further down the line, I think. But that's a good question, so hold that question.
So, I suppose that'd be a lot of questions coming adjacent to it.
I'm thinking in terms of, I guess maybe I was thinking bigger picture, I wasn't thinking about like scoop-y tokens, but maybe, I mean, if that's what the intent is. Yeah, I suppose. Does that happen now, like principals, do you get, if people are looking for donations for stuff like GoFund, they're doing a GoFundMe, do they come through you right now?
I think it's just social media.
Because that's the social media one that they're referring to.
That's the social media.
I don't think that we're being asked at all for any of that reason.
I, my opinion is honestly, like talking through this with one Nate, I was thinking bigger items here, right? Not smaller, but I think there's value in leading the building administrators. Honestly, if you were to ask my recommendation, I would move the district administrator part of that, say the building administration, like if someone's raising money for chairs, like wobble chairs or whatever, or whatever, I would like them to go to their principal and say, hey, I'm gonna do a GoFundMe for...
Well, but that's in the GoFundMe thing, that's a different policy.
I saw this as social media though, I guess I was thinking it said, from a website or other social media, that...
I've got some that have been, they have still killed those, but I've never seen any of them.
Yeah.
And I think that's just common practice.
I would agree, and I think we need to change that practice, and I think this policy, this language would facilitate like, hey, listen, it's totally wearing, say no, but they're like, are you fundraising for something? Because here's what the reality is, maybe you don't need to, and maybe we have an alternative funding source that might be able to do it, so it's not about like micromanaging, it's about, I want to be aware if you got three different people fundraising for the same things or...
And I think with our link coming up like in February, we were going to share out this staff about surveying.
Yes.
Right.
On that, like, then I think that would kind of proceed like, okay, here's what we have, people are doing this, now we need to have something...
We could create a forum. We could create a form. Honestly, that would be like to this, like a form.
For something like GoFundMe, why do you wanna be involved?
I don't wanna be involved, I wanna, oh, you mean, uh, they, they, I just want someone to know, right?
Right, the teacher wants a, a GoFundMe, just go talk to the principal and get her to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause when I can tell you, I hear examples, like somebody seeing in the street say, oh, why don't the teachers have a fundraiser chairs? Right, like it's nice to know things, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's not chairs, it's specialized chairs that they want, like, just so we're aware and we're not caught off guard about their.
And, and that goes back to the whole thing you guys are working on in terms of setting up a process, so you know the right hand and left hand and the right foot, know what's going on. So, okay, and we may want to, in this policy, we may want to reference the crowdfunding policy also, so, okay. Um, okay, page two, so get keep, get rid of district administrator and keep building principal.
Not to, not to, I just wanna, so cross-reference, we would add that crowdfunding cross-reference on there for.
Yeah.
For cross-reference policy then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, 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 okay. Okay, so the top of page two, um, the board shall be advised of all gifts and sponsorships, um, with a value of a thousand or more. Quite frankly, I think it should be less than that, because if one of the things we wanna do is communicate with our community that we are getting alternate funding. And I don't know if two fifty is the magic number, but you know, if you get a, if you get a check for two fifty from the Lions Club or something, I'd love to see something on social media and in the newspaper. Thank you to the Lions Club for doing this. Or thank you to the Legion Auxiliary or.
So, correct, I mean, if I'm wrong, and I could be having flashbacks to my previous district where we did this, is that we're supposed to have a form that tracks donations. I just put my glasses on, cause I can't see if I'm on.
Cause most of the time, I don't know who's donating what, we get all the receipt form and on this.
Here's what my vision would be, and this, my thought, is we created a document where we tracked every donation that came in, whether it was five dollars or a hundred dollars, and then quarterly, we presented that at a board meeting to the board.
Okay.
As a document, so it wasn't like every time someone donated, I came and said, board, someone just donated fifty dollars, but it was quarterly, we had a chart, we had a document that said, here's all the donations that came into the district, and it would, it would be in a board meeting under consent, um, for approval for the donations during, during that, you know, every, every three months at a board meeting.
Well, and, you know, and again, I think the important thing is to be able to communicate some things out to the community. You know, what the fire department used to do is, you know, when they were, you know, whatever for something, they like, yeah, that these are the people we got donations from, they never said the amounts.
When Mill Densky was raising his football money, that's how it went in the Pittsville Record.
Yeah.
People made donations.
And now we have social media too.
And I think it's important to acknowledge folks, no matter how small for their donations, but I'm just thinking in terms for the board, it could get a little bit overwhelming if everyone that came in, but if we did it quarterly, we're, we're creating this document, and we're gonna get people to, here, do it, that's easy enough to throw in, under consent. Uh, honestly, I, I think it's in my files from my former district, it's just, it was just a document that said building, donation, purpose. Um, and, and all these donations that were, you know, they fit within the mission of the district, might pick accepted donations and stuff, but I'll, I'll work on finding a form that I can share out that, that, as part of this, that you guys can give some feedback. But I think that would be a nice way to acknowledge it as a board, but also we would expect that we would be individually recognizing these donations as they came in, you know, promoting them, uh, with whatever it be, thank you cards or social media policy.
Would those be like just general Pittsville, or like maybe Lucy's Garden? Would that be considered on that too? I would say yes.
I, I believe it would be, yes.
Okay, so would be any type of.
Cause it's, you know, the, all those donations, like Lucy's Garden is a part of the school, it's the school district, right? So, yes, I would say yes.
Okay, yeah. Yes, so we should probably change this sentence, uh, the board should be advised of all gifts and sponsorships accepted by the school district, not necessarily district administrator. Oh, or district administrator, or his/her designees, and reported to the board.
Quarterly or whatever.
Quarterly, yeah.
It could be bi- bi- annually, I mean, it's however the board felt like it would be necessary.
Quarterly would be nice. Yeah, the board should be advised quarterly.
It's a running document, so really, once it's created, it's not a huge deal to just pop it in there, under consent, and it just allows the board to kind of see what our rolling donations are.
And even what the value of those.
Yep, and what it went for, so we can see what are we, what are we raising. It's good to be able to take the look, and we always kind of knew, back, back in that day, that was when the flexible seating was the rave. So, you would see a lot of folks, primary teachers were crow- crowdsourcing for flexible seating, you know, the waffle chairs and, and those things. So, it's always interesting to see, um.
Okay.
Right?
But we get rid of that with a value of one thousand or more. Board shall be advised of all gifts.
But hold on a second, we're, we're saying twice here. The board shall be advised of all gifts, sponsorships accepted by the district administrator or his/her.
Quarterly.
And reported to the board for period. So, but, but, so, at the top, sorry, saying the board shall be advised, okay? Well, then you just.
This shall be done quarterly, quarterly reported.
Then you just put quarterly after that, after advised on top.
And no value.
Yeah, shall be advised quarterly.
Yeah, and the board, and the board has to approve anything over five thousand, is that accurate? We're like, they have to have formal approval, is it over five thousand? Does that sound accurate?
But I'm aware, since we haven't been doing that.
Well, this is where we're gonna start doing things.
I do, I mean, I do, if I'm aware of it, I would do a letter thanking the donor, telling them what it will be used for, and that they can use that document as a tax document if I'm aware of it, but I would not make aware of them all.
All right, well, that's gonna change.
Yes, that's gonna change. That's why we're reviewing the policy.
Well, great, and, and this helps us connect with our board goals also.
Yeah, yeah, it really does, from, you know, the funding perspective, the communication, all of that. Now, I don't know, no, I didn't, I, I did specifically ask about Lucy's Garden in one of these documents, not in this one, but this, yeah, provide proper acknowledgement for all gifts accepted and received.
And they do on that, they do on a letter, and they do on social media.
Okay.
And that last paragraph in this policy that indicates it's a responsibility to district administrator to oversee compliance, including providing proper notification to staff, like booster clubs in general, public, would be, um, Deb, how, how could we, how would we satisfy that requirement of notification? I'm thinking of other things where there's a required public notification, I mean, you all would, you, you two would email your staff and say, as you're doing this process, please don't donate your donations, we're not looking to curb donations, it's the opposite. Pam, you got an idea?
Just thinking of this, I mean, if we're looking at all donations with no dollar values, so, pep club runs concessions at a basketball game and shares with the community youth group.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a donation, or is that they worked for it and they're sharing it in the profit?
But they're donating it to a community youth group, not a school group, so it's.
What are they donating it, or does that group work for it? Know what I'm saying, or, you know, um.
I think you're overcomplicating.
Also, and all the fundraising that's done at band and cookie sellers and all of this.
That's not a donation, obviously.
It's fundraising.
Well, I thought we were talking specifically about donations though.
This policy is donations and sponsorships.
Okay.
And that.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Cash, cashier and Lou would most raise attached, other than it's used toward Lucy's Garden or providing for Panthers. That's the only string attached, no product in exchange.
Yeah, yes, that was my understanding, at least of this particular one.
Okay. Okay. Um, in terms of, um, informing the public, or I don't know how important that is.
Well, could it be posted as part, like Pam, or Deb, I'm thinking like your, you know, you know, the notices we post and stuff, there's several things that this could fit in.
Yeah, I could put it on the website, or I could put it in.
And that would serve as public notice, right?
Yeah, you don't have to publish it with big murder, no.
That's what I was thinking, that would be public notice, and administrators will let their staff know what they answered. Like, here's the policy, this is the procedure.
Yeah, okay, okay, so we not talk eight forty, then we have eight forty rule. Which, yep. Um, okay, the beginning, the first paragraph, again, I highlighted it. Um, just checking, is this offered to the building principal or district?
Well, a big piece I looked for that was included that, that is essential is the, it'd be the third bullet point under number two.
Okay.
The reasons for declining a gift or sponsorship, cause that's a sticky wicket, and I like this language is that if a gift or donation is gonna add significantly to expenses within the district. So, something is being donated that's gonna require like additional expenses, like maintenance or the upkeep, that would be avenue for potentially the district to decline the donation, um, potentially.
Potentially.
Right, like if, if, I, I, just thinking in terms of.
If we're doing the building, Stephen Hefield got a great deal on welders.
Yeah.
Well, that increased our costs because we had to supply electricity that, that wasn't in the budget.
It would be analyzed if there was like, what are some extenuating costs that may be associated for a large donation? Cause it makes it seem like, hey, this is a great donation, it's a great.
A horse.
Yeah, a horse. Like, who's gonna take care of the horse?
A horse?
That builds, that looks, that's a great example, but it's still a lot to donate a horse. It's all right, we got a horse pet, but no, you don't have to take your horse.
You know, there are some schools with FFA chapters that have school farms. FFA donated horse. Okay, okay.
I thought this was pretty comprehensive, like this, this list covers all the bullet points of things that would indicate where it gives us some flexibility as far as accepting gifts that we're not looking to say no, but if there was an awkward situation, and it would put us in like, name the horse or something, that we have the ability to plead the refusal gift.
Okay, um, and then on page, on, on page two, I have a thing about, um, restricted to specific uses, um, just to review this. And then following up on that, do we have a restricted funds account or accounts? I know we have different accounts, or, do we have, do we have restricted accounts for donations?
It depends on what, where the donation is going, so, if it's a donation, um, and we're creating a new Fund Twenty-One Club for it, and it says it's only going to be used for providing for Panthers, that is all that's used for.
And Lucy's Garden has its own account, right?
Yes, there's a lot that they do, there's a lot that does.
Okay.
Um, if it's someone that says, I just wanna donate five hundred dollars to the band program, it goes into the general fund and it gets spent for band, whatever the band needs. You know, one year we bought those, um, two, what did we buy? Was it tubas? I don't remember what it was we bought. We just bought zidol phones to, um, somebody donated somebody for something, then.
We were short on tubas.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, it depends on how it's worth it, I mean, it's not the word is spend right away, we're not throwing it up on balance because it's, it's spent right away, there's no carryover.
But then, do you keep track of it somehow, so you know that, like, okay, if you don't spend it right away?
Then it goes into a Fund Twenty-One, so we can track it separately.
Got it.
It'll be tracked separately.
Okay, got it, okay. Okay, I highlighted the thing on sign it, any recognition that is to be displayed, blah, 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 blah. And then two years came up again later. What's with this two-year thing? That, that you can't be, you can't recognize the person with a plaque or something, it has to be less than two years?
Right, Andrew, you tell me where we're at on the page.
What's the history of this two-year thing? Yeah, five halfway down, and I have a question here. Yeah, is there something related to this two-year thing? What's the history of this two-year thing? Is that a WASB thing, or?
That was interacted from WASB. Why, I don't know, we could ask.
You know, shall be for a period of less than two years, any, any recognition of a significant gift that is to be displayed on a district site or activity.
I think they're looking for, looking for our input on that, because you'll see.
Approval of the district administrator and the board.
That's just an example.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think if, if there's a significant gift, I think we can keep a plaque after longer than two years.
And I'm reading this, the board and the administrator have the right to approve that. It's just a comes up for review, the way I'm reading this, it said must have approval, unless directly approved, shall be a period of less than, um, identify the two years, although maybe reviewed at expiration. So, every two years, it's reviewed by the board and they can approve it.
Can approve it, the plaque can stay up.
Correct, that's my understanding when I'm reading this. If you guys wanna approve it, this is, this was an example from WASB, the board can remove that if you want to. I think it's important to have some type of review, maybe not two years, but where it's periodically, and here's the question, who's gonna track it through?
That, that's another thing, but, but I guess if it was to become an issue, you would have this to refer back to.
Yes.
Right.
Otherwise, if it's just, you know, there's no time limit, and it's harder just.
Yes. Let me do, since this is first reading, let me do a little digging into that. I'll, I'll have that with the board, I'll give, I'll, I'll dig, and I'll get some feedback as to that particular language where they came up with that recommendation.
Well, the other thing I would say, I mean, that, that third bullet point starts off with any recognition of a significant gift. Well, what's significant? I mean, if five thousand, ten thousand.
That was big.
You know, that's a, that's a big gift.
I mean, that was high dollar donation.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess this is kind of, that's an example here.
Right.
It's just something.
So, bears gotta come down eventually.
If the recognition of a bear, right, but you know, if someone gives us something significant, I mean, to me, the key thing is.
Yeah, we acknowledge, we took pictures of it and acknowledged it back at that point, too, when it was donated last year, yes. It was a gentleman, worked with an aide for a while, real.
Ah, okay. Okay, so anyway, I'm, I was just, I thought this whole two-year thing was, uh, it was like, what's the history of this?
I'll dig, and give the board an update, if they're comfortable with putting it through the first reading.
Right, and, yeah, and if, and if someone, again, significant. Leave their plaque up. Okay, the last one, seven, um, yes, this is very good, and we are doing this right now, right, Pam? Uh, the donor, yeah, letter of acknowledgement for tax purposes, okay, good.
You do that.
So, I'm getting aware of it, yes.
Okay, well.
And after the principles complete, then we will be aware of.
Yes. Okay, bingo. Okay, use of crowdfunding, here we are. Our favorite topic. Actually, this I thought was pretty good. The only question I had on this, I thought this was really good. The only, um, question I had is towards the very, very, very end, is the proper acknowledgement or recognition should be given. What is proper acknowledgement through crowdfunding? If you got, you know, twenty people, you send them all a note, do you, I don't know, what, what's proper recognition?
So, I do know that we've had a couple of teachers do the crowdfunding, GoFundMe where we personally have donated, like, I don't know, and we, the teacher typed a thank you letter that then gets sent to all the people who donated. I don't know if that would qualify, but I just got one from a teacher, one of the elementary teachers, where I got an email. That was a thank you letter from that particular teacher.
Okay.
Um, I, at first thought it was a personal letter, and I was feeling very special, but I realized that it was an informed letter. But still, it meets the purpose, and I was like, oh, that's nice, I was like, great, but this is going to everybody.
Okay.
So, do you think appropriate acknowledgement would, might be a better? So do you think appropriate acknowledgement would, might be a better? Because that kind of leaves you appropriate or.
I would just say acknowledgement. Why say anything, just say acknowledgement will be given.
Right, because there's a lot of anonymous donors for donors too, for crowdfunding.
Cause you have to click if you want to be, if you want to be, um, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And I do know this, same thing with those, even if you're anonymous, when it's funded, you'll, you'll still get a message saying this project's already funded.
Correct.
Even if you're anonymous.
Right.
You just get, nobody if you.
Yeah. That's good. Good, good, good. Okay. Naming facilities, didn't we, this one I think we talked about last time, didn't we? Yeah. And I didn't add any new stuff on the old app.
Can you go towards the bottom?
But it's waiting for it to populate. This isn't, oh, here we go. Page two.
Which one do you want?
The next one. Um. Hopping in buildings, nine forty. Yep, I didn't have any, any questions or anything on the first one, you know, I think we talked about some of this last time around.
It was just, um, information only.
Oh, okay.
Last time.
I just see the note of, I don't know who put that note, but naming major facilities, major facilities despite at the end, but switching it to the top.
Yeah, that was, that was my note. Yeah, you have to define your terms at the beginning. Um. Designating a process, do we want to designate a process? Um. Under naming other areas within a school or district facility. Um. You know, again. I, we're a small school district, no offense, still being principals, but I think if someone wants to name something, I need, I think it needs to go to the big guy. Okay.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Okay. Um, yeah. Okay. Okay, I think we talked about the last.
So some of the highlight on the B and the D. Was that for a particular reason or someone just making note of that? So if you, if you die, you can have facilities named within two years, if you're alive, you have like ten. Is the short takeaway of those two things?
Um, is this?
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on rule, I jumped ahead of your rule, I apologize.
Yeah, the other things that I had highlighted were just like, okay, it's, I mean, to me, they were interesting and worthy of discussion, but maybe not. I remember we talked about the whole public hearing thing and all of that once, kind of, so, okay. So the only real change on that one is send it up to the big guy. Okay. So nine forty rule?
Yeah, I just, B and, B and D.
B and D.
B and D, so two years from the. Date after the person's death, but if it is a, a living person, you wanted to name ten years after the last day of service. So if it was a school board member, it would be, you know, it had to have been ten years. I think those were just arbitrary dates or thrown out by WASB, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to let B, I think we should just.
I don't understand the significance of waiting for years, I guess, is what I was. Yes.
Right, and I think, and I think we did with, uh, Margaret Brown's.
No, that was two years.
Yeah.
Was it two years?
Was it two years? Okay.
I mean, if you took that timeframe also, then I would definitely have a little more.
So I heard you got less reflection.
So I don't, again, the two years is changing vertically for the other.
As does the ten years, to be honest with you. Like I, you don't know, like it here, I mean, I, I agree with you is that with some, like, the last determined. You know, by the board. Um, give some flexibility, cause for instance, if I wanted to have something named after me, I may retire early so that I could get that ten-year clock. Um, I wouldn't want to continue working, cause I would have to, I'd have to wait ten years to have the, the administration after.
And you're gonna have to give us a check.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, I thought it was related to the service. All right.
Okay, so you're gonna make that change down, putting in the board discretion. Who was weighed by this?
Some flexibility for the board for those durations for the naming.
Yeah, I'll come up with something.
Okay. Um, okay, so the file, yep, yep, after your form. Uh, you know, and the other thing that I did on pre-C, I just highlighted equitable. What is this equitable to other individuals who would make similar contributions, just?
How do you define that?
Yeah.
So I would say if, an example might be is if you wanted to name like an athletic facility after a coach. What's the determining factor to say, like, how is it determined that this particular coach, that, that's the way I read that.
Why did this coach get it and that coach didn't?
Right, it was a duration of years coach, was it conference championships, one, like, what? What determination was made, that's why it gets to be a sticky, like, if anytime you're naming athletic facilities. It's, it's tough to, like, determine because there's so much value, like, so many. So.
Okay.
I don't know how to define that, other than say that would be what my thought would be is, you know. Does go, coaching girls sports carry as much weight as if it was in a boys sport or, you know. I'm sure the sports weighted more.
Okay, got it. Um, thank you for sticking with this discussion and humorin' me on this, I appreciate that. Um. Okay, C, policy setting deleted. Uh, so first reading of deletion of eight forty-one, which was this old acceptance and administration of gifts that is now in eight forty. Uh, so that's first reading, get rid of that puppy. Uh, second reading, um, deleting, he says a library media things.
Yeah.
Um, deleting three, six, one, point two, one, point two, three, point two, four, point two, five. Point three, one.
That'll be replaced by three sixty-one, two, and three sixty-two.
Yeah.
Mary Anne, you still have second reading of number four, three forty-one, point.
Oh!
Oh, good catch, Leslie.
Oh my gosh, yes, and the new policy, reading and literacy development, oh my gosh. I'm sorry.
Leslie, would you like to speak to this a little?
Well, I shared with them and I shared with the board, um, we are all in Act twenty right now. Um, it is intense. We're hoping, because the official. Due date is kind of the mid of January and that's what we're kind of in. So, um, thanks to, um, Krista, bring in, as our reading specialist, she has been forefronting all of this. And she has been, like, we've been attending CISA pop-up meetings, she's been attending some other ones that have helped us along the way. We get information and it changes the next, like, week, sometimes the next hour. And we're still waiting on a few things like the promotion policy, they just came out. I think it might have been Friday with, um, kind of some suggestions. And so we are working on that. Our third graders, so we started testing with our third graders at the beginning of January. And then today, they met also with, um, a CISA representative to help start writing the personal reading plans. So it was intense. Um, and it's just, we had a forum, CISA helped us with it, but it's just.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, they had to do AIMS web testing. And then from there, if any student did not meet the twenty-fifth percentile on the AIMS web testing, then they had to do a batter, battery of, like, diagnostic tests. So, um, it was kind of trying to narrow down where is this student struggling? So it could be in phonetic awareness, it could be, um, comprehension, those kinds of things, it was really narrowing down. So it was, um, labor intensive and then you have to take all that and anybody probably below that twenty-fifth percentile, you have to create this reading plan. And it's a mini IP, basically, and how are we going to help them? Improve their scores? And so, um, it's definitely involved. And just because they are below the twenty-fifth percentile does not mean that they will automatically go and see the reading interventionist. Because it can be things that will be done in the classroom, but just more focused. And with our bookworms, we have, um, our DI block, which is differentiated instruction. And so with all of those tests, it's broken down as to what those students need and so they're grouped based off of what their deficit is in that area. And then those lessons will be geared directly towards those small groups.
That was one of the intriguing things about bookworms, was that DI block that was specifically built in for direct instruction, the whole unanimous deficits with groups of students. So, but Leslie's right, this is a lot for our staff. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's gonna be good for our kids. What's frustrating is all of the funding promises related to this, cause this is labor and time intensive for our staff and costly. Um, the state has pretty much walked in all of those funding promises that were made with this, including the curriculum. Fifty percent of the reimbursement for the curriculum, we're still waiting and are told. We'll let you know.
Waiting.
When we're waiting, so that's the only frustrating part is, it's a lot, the training is really expensive, it's all required, it's, it's gonna be for the betterment of our students. It's just a lot right now for staff, um, in, in administration.
And learning the curriculum.
Yeah.
That Act twenty, letters training. And then Bridges is only a year old.
Right.
So they still have all of that and it's just, it, it's a lot.
Yes, so I think the administrators are doing an excellent job of trying to balance that, like, like, we're not trying to put more on teachers plates right now, especially in those primary levels. Is, is that you guys focus on this stuff right now and we're gonna take everything else we can off your plate, cause this is important stuff, so.
Wow. Um, any questions or comments on this policy and plan? Um, we are asking for approval. We are because it tries to be posted, um, mid-January, um, on our website.
Okay.
This is supposed to overwhelm the system.
Like, what do you mean overwhelm the system?
I mean, you know, it's, you guys have all this extra stuff going on. And you, I just want to make sure that everybody's on board of this. It's a great plan, it's just.
Yeah.
And we don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice, I actually know, I know, but what I'm, what I'm thinking on the reverse angle of this.
Is there something that we need, that we need to do to, you know, do, do we need to hold off on something in the background? So it's not to overwhelm or?
Oh, I know what you're, so please, you're asking, I got to trust this.
I'm just kidding. Behind us.
I, I think right now, what, what's, this is what the administrators are doing a good job of, it's exactly that, is they're, they're kind of limiting that focus on this is what you need to worry about right now and not a lot of extra meetings or all these other things, so.
They're handling it.
They're, they're doing a great job of trying to meet the needs of their staff.
We're using subs for our teachers to do the testing and then meeting today to do the personal reading plans. And trust me, I've been in about four classrooms, extra subbing because we're.
Leslie's super soft today.
Um, and so, because I don't want to pull them, because they, they legally, they have to get the testing done. Because after we finish the testing, then we have so many days to get the personal reading plans done. Um, we have to get all the diagnostics done, if they don't pass it, and then the personal reading plan, so. Like, we are, um, doing lots of things and, um, I said, some days it's sub roulette. That is like, who's, who can be in what room? And so other staff have been helping out, um, trying to do coverage, just so that we can have all of that.
And to be clear, it's not like this, all, when it comes to the testing is when this gets like this, those windows where we have to. So it isn't like, this is pretty overwhelming, but this is kind of the exception during those periods when we're.
And January will be the worst, because this is the first time we've done it.
Yes.
Because now, when we do it again in the spring, hopefully, we don't have as many of those kids and they will already have their personal reading plan. So it's not like we have to create new ones, unless a student would fall, you know, below, but because of all the extra diagnostic tests we're doing. The DI blocks that we're doing extra of during, you know, our ELA block or during wind time. Hopefully, all of that in the spring will, um, our scores will be going up and we won't have as much like this one. And even, um, we had someone from CISA today and she's like, this is a big one and everybody in the state is acknowledging that, but it's getting through it and then it will be better.
So an example, an example, something we would do is we have a professional learning day coming on Friday. Uh, where the kids are up to step, is the administration minimizing the amount of time we're pulling teachers ready. Like, it's like, you, you need time to work and collaborate in the classrooms and get that stuff done, catch your breath and do that, those are the little things that have a big impact. Like Leslie talked about, stopping getting themselves so that they can get this testing done and stuff like that. So what we're gonna do, the administration's gonna do everything within their power to lessen the blow. If we can make it through this period right now in January, like Leslie said, it should get smoother sailing after that.
So if I call any of you to sub, please. I was texting subs on Friday night, because that's how, we were down four subs, um, this morning. And like, we made it, we made it with one and a half.
Um, so Leslie, if you could share with your staff that the board really appreciates all the work that they're doing, they realize, we realize that this is a challenging time.
I guess that's kind of what I wanted to do, is to reiterate.
For sure, we'll pass that one.
Yeah, thank you, I love it.
Thank you.
We need a, we need it for approval because they, mid-January is the deadline from the state that you have to have this approved. This is pretty much, what this does is checks all the boxes that are required by Act twenty on this plan.
Which we took a template from CISA who is doing it.
And here it is.
And we just made it and we adjusted it to fit Greatville, but everything is what we would need.
This means the requirements that the state has set out for Act twenty requirements for mid-January. So we need to be approved.
Yeah, so I would, um, where am I here? Okay, I would, um, entertain a motion to accept the first reading and approve new policy three, four, one, point one.
Also.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy three, four, three, four, one, point one, on favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now I can move on to deletions. I'm not gonna say all those things I said before, because it's like, do I have to do that now? Okay, good. So, yeah, first reading of deleting, okay, that's first reading, second reading, second reading of all these three, six, ones. And.
The deletions.
The deletions, right, 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 all the deletions.
And if you want, you can make one big motion for both of those.
We can make one big motion, remove both of them, for three of them?
For, for number two and number three. Number one is a first reading.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to delete all the policies in C two and C three.
Oh, I will motion that we delete the policies in C two and C three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to do this mass deletion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we can finally move on to D, which is open enrollment space availability. Now, this is one where I recall we are not able to, like, freelance the motion, that it needs to be.
It needs to be read.
Exactly.
Exactly as you see on there, that is accurate.
Yes.
And I, I would, uh, ask if the board have any specific questions? The numbers for, the grade levels are pretty consistent with last year. Um. If you would like Danny to talk briefly about the, we, we lowered our, uh, numbers for some of our students with disabilities based upon our services, we have available, Danny, wanna talk?
Yeah, while increasing speech, since we have a full-time speech, we are able to up our numbers a little bit for open enrollment, while simultaneously thinking about our child find efforts improving. We have a speech model that's improving next year where she can be in the classroom more, so she'll also be able to see and listen to students more and have those hands-on observations. Um, also opportunity in collab, hopefully with, um, tabby for PCCC and having more, um, observations occurring there too, so that we can get that early intervention piece with the adults. Um, but then, there are a couple areas right now where we're looking at lower numbers for open enrollment, just because of workloads for our case managers. Had, having hired an additional pair of, our system is pretty, pretty tight right now at the elementary middle school. Um, and I'm just having a couple spaces for the high school available too. So just really being cognizant of. So just really being cognizant of our teachers and their workloads right now.
And, and this would be too, another note to that would be, we, if we have a resident student that moves in, we are legally required to provide, you cannot, like, you accept that student. So what, what Danny and the principals are doing is having the foresight that we don't wanna stretch our services then, because if we accept open enrollment and then we have a student move in, we even have to hire additional staff to meet the needs of those students. So this is the numbers that we feel safe with, that even allowing for some resident move-ins, we can service the students. So hence the numbers that you see changed.
Yeah, you still keep that, like, open, if like the family of five wants to move in and one of their cousins is category?
Yeah, so, and that's a great point to bring up, Nick, and that's the dilemma with looking at, now, if they move in, like, like, if they move in, it's a no-brainer, right? We did, it's the open enrollment request that gets sticky, because you always wanna make sure, because you will have kids, more families will move in. And we got, we have to, and of course, want to take them. The open enrollment, we have a choice, but if we lock ourselves into numbers, and we have people move in, we still have to service those students. And we can't then go back and deny open enrollment, which means we could put ourselves in a pickle, where we don't have, like, let's say OT. If, if we were, we know how much we have for OT services right now. We build in that this is what we know we have students that need OT services as part of their IEPs. If we get right up to the point where we are full, by accepting another student who occurs OT, and also we have a family that moves in and has a child. Well, now we need to call CISA and say we need another day of OT services, which is gonna cost us potentially seventeen thousand dollars for another day of services or something. So Danny projected this out and is leaving spaces, that's why we lowered those numbers, because we're getting tight in some areas for servicing. So that's why we're taking less spaces for students with disabilities, because we're getting to that point where it would be too dangerous. Uh, if we had any students move in with IEPs to be able to maintain services without significant increases in costs, the cost of registry. And that's a lot of mumbo jumbo, but, um, we're playing a little bit safe here on. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, Dan, for real, like Danny, Danny evaluates the case loads and the answer.
Just like anybody we already have open enrollment this year, we're counting them as someone like.
The, we, we have them counted as we try to do services, yes, Nick, this would be for new requests. And of course, we wanna take any, you know, we know that, because I think what you're talking about, let's say we get a family that wants to move in, that has five children, and they have one with a disability. As hard as that would be, but at, great, depending on what services are needed, we would potentially maybe have to say no, if we couldn't service that student's needs. Um, we would accept the other four, but how many families are you gonna say we're gonna split our families up in, right? So yes, that, it's heartbreaking, honestly, that, like, these are not easy decisions to come to, but you have to balance the needs of our resident students, the physical side of it, you have to. Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
How many students are in our second grade right now?
I wanna say they had eighteen in class.
Well, third and sixth.
It's smaller than the third grade.
Yeah, it's, it's, let's see, next year, oh, maybe that's the first grade class.
Our first grade is smaller.
Really, it's smaller than that, yeah. How many are in that, I mean, I see we're allowing eighteen.
That's why we have numbers for, because that's our small class, yes, that's the next year.
How many do we have in that first year?
I think there's twenty-five or something.
I think it's about twenty-five, between those, right, total.
That was our small, yeah, that's our small class. Now, what I will tell you is you typically, you know, our classes have grown a little, like, we, we have seen the numbers go up a little bit from early primary, as they get into third, they go up. But, yeah, that's our, that's one of our reverse bubble classes, yeah, for sure.
So, um, I would entertain a motion, but the person has to read the whole thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the following number of spaces available for open enrollment in regular education classrooms for the 25, 26 school year. 4K, ten spaces, kindergarten, ten spaces. Uh, first grade, eight spaces, grade two, eighteen spaces, grade three, six spaces, grade four, three spaces, grade five. Sixteen spaces, grade six, eight spaces, grade seven, eleven spaces. Grade eight, six spaces, grade nine, seven spaces, grade 10, seven spaces, grade 11, five spaces, and grade 12, six spaces.
Okay.
I will second.
Um, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
It's a seven, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next motion, um, relates to special education opening enrollment.
Nick did a really good job.
I'll make a motion to approve the following number of spaces available for open enrollment and special education services for the 25, 26 school year. Uh, speech, language in 4K, uh, 12, well, 4K through 12.
Yeah.
Three spaces, and the following spaces available for ID and meeting services. Grade two, two spaces, grade three through five, zero spaces, grade six through eight, zero spaces, grades nine through 12, two spaces.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special education open enrollment numbers, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. E, high school safety drill.
So before break, we ran our December safety drill, um, it was supposed to be on Thursday before, we had snow days, so to Friday morning. Um, our three supervisors that were on, it was myself, Chief Doer, and my administrative assistant, Kim Fox. Um, because we have a very unique situation, um, Mrs. Fox was over here in the ZTE building, Chief Doer was inside our high school building, and I was on the outside, um, of our high school building. So, um, because this is the first drill, I made a checklist for my staff of what they needed to do for closed door, um, in their classroom. And then, um, which we started off with, we started with the closed door, which means you shut your door, shut your blinds, and you continue teaching as normal. Um, and then we transitioned into a, um, lockdown, um, drill. Obviously, I was over the announcements, um, but also walking the perimeter of our high school. Um, again, Chief Doer was in, um, the high school, and then Kim Fox was in the ZTE department. Um, I guess the biggest takeaway is we made our practice more, um, in taking these drills seriously, and knowing that, you know, after the drill was all over. Um, Chief Doer did a fantastic job, went to each classroom and explained, like, what, where they should be located in the room, um, how to barricade the door. There was no, there was not necessarily barricading going on, but, um, what can you barricade with what you have in the classroom? Whether it's a desk, whether it's a, a podium, a table, a chair, um, so that was, um, super powerful. Um, and then, it's all, it's all, like, timed, right? So the more chairs you put by the door, the more desks put, it's all buying time for enforcement to get there. So, um, yeah, the drill took ten minutes, um, yeah, it was just, and then, uh, we had a staff meeting this last week, and then we kind of re, regrouped of like, what we can do better, what to look for next time. And we will be doing more drills like this, um, so, super beneficial. Um, and then, at the, in our marketing service, we do have, um, the state of Wisconsin Department of Justice coming in. Um, this speak-up, speak-out, um, to talk about our school safety. Um, it's for our in-service day in March, um, March 21st, um, to also discuss our standard response protocol and our standard reunification method. Um, which our administrative staff and myself included have been working over break, on getting binders ready, um, what that would look like. Um, so a lot of work's being, being done for that day in March.
And I would add on that yesterday, yeah, the FOPS came for Wood County. So the district ordered forty, forty-eight. We, we, uh, we reached out and talked to Charlie Hubusseger, got a number on FOPS, so that every, um, Wood County deputy, any law enforcement, will have their own FOP for full access to our building. Um, so those are being delivered to Charlie, then they'll document which, which, uh, deputies receive them and quote them, and then give us the list back. So, those were ordered and delivered, uh, yesterday, so, kinda on the safety. But, did Charlie put you on the list? Yeah.
They get one for the calling.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the idea was to get any, any of, uh, like, our local is in the, uh, Pittsville police right now, I would have zero problems with that. Can you have, can you have someone put in a request?
I will first of all, uh, see what chairs, what plans are.
Yeah.
They may have included us in their numbers.
And they might have. Yeah, but yeah, absolutely, if not, yes. The idea was, is many, like, having that access could make a huge difference, having that immediate access responding to a situation, so.
Yeah, so I have to ask, um, I love, I love these kinda drills, and it's great for the students, um. So it was great to hear that they practiced barricades, and then, uh, Chief Doer was able to come in and explain a lot of this stuff to them. And of course, I'm just curious, um, okay, so they've got the, the heightened barricade thing now. When it comes to the running situation, can you, can you give me some examples of what they've been instructed to do for the run?
Yeah, so, um, our two sites are church, um, and like our, so our reunification process is either the church or the bus garage. Um, at that point, like, we do a, Chief Doer does it beginning with our staff around my fight, uh, presentation. It's been given to our high school students twice, um, during their PPT time, um, but it's, we did designate the location for the intruder. Like, if it's in the, if it's on the perimeter, we're staying in-house. Um, and so, again, we will, like, these are the drills that I wanna keep doing, um, but more of like, hey, the intruder's in the ZTE building. You know, different scenarios, hey, the intruder, or during passing time, you know, what do you do? Um, because sometimes, tho- those are the times that if it's, or it's at lunch, you know, we've got kids up in senior lounge, we've got kids in gym, we've got kids in lunchroom and library, um, and then using two additional rooms. Um, so, like, those are the conversations that I wanna be having, like, with my staff, and, you know, what do you do? You know, like, if my teacher here in the lounge, like, what do you do? Um, you know, where do you go?
So I wanna talk to, to, can you see something and say something?
Yeah.
If you're in your classroom and you see something going on outside, by the time, you get on the loudspeaker, everybody has access to that from their phones. And then they say where the location is, so that everybody's aware.
They have access to the loudspeaker on their phone?
Any staff that ever can do an all-call at the PA system in case the office is destroyed.
So have we addressed this PA system, and we even talked about having some problems with the PA system?
I asked, so, I get on my phone, and I've asked many times, like, when we do, even the closed door, like, CT, can you hear me? Okay, I, I've, um, asked staff, like, even upstairs in English Army, can you hear me, is it clear, is it? You know, we've, we've, we keep talking, because we do announcements every day.
Right.
Um, over the loudspeaker.
The problem is the admin area.
The problem is the admin area.
One of the ones who came here is the administrative offices.
We were here.
In the gym, I can hear it in the gym.
We were in the closed door the other day, um, and the staff had been talking to Jason, and he came over and he's like, are we in the closed door?
Yeah.
Yep, we are.
I can hear it in there.
Yes, we are.
Integration of the system.
So, uh.
But we do have walkie.
We do have walkie, yes.
The, the five teachers have walkies on them, so that's a space that's in there, and the five teachers have walkies. So that, that would have to be, that's known, like, that's a known issue we have, is the integration of our PA systems. The dead spot is the gym, the first gym and the admin office, alright?
And with that in mind, in a critical situation like this, who's responsible for monitoring surveillance?
The, like, as far as the security?
So somebody needs to be following the threat via surveillance. And this should be communicated appropriately, that's something that needs to be, maybe Chief Doer addressed this. But in a situation like that, I, I feel it's important that somebody should be monitoring the threat.
So we all have that, like, like, I have, and I, I mean, in particular, and I know some of Chris will be, so I have dual monitors on my desk. Uh, if you come into my office, you'll see I have a human day, my one monitor, and this isn't meant to sound creepy, it's got like forty-two cameras up, where I'm just kinda arm-working at my desk, I can monitor what's going on in the building. These guys all have access to that, and I believe Chief Doer has access to our security cameras. Yeah, so there is multiple points of access, the admin assistants have access to live feeds. So, I'm trying to remember something, Chris, because I know, I kinda get what you're getting at. When I, in my former district, I was Alice trained, I actually went and got trained to be able to come back and train in the district. And we have like a protocol for how we communicate, how we track and monitor where, where this person is. Here's what I will tell you about our surveillance systems. It is very.
You don't have to give too much detail.
And I don't want to, it, it can be complicated at times to, to do that. So what we try to promote is this, that's why that all-call is, is you have an intruder, is someone's on the PA from a classroom saying they're in the tech headway. And we're making that announcement, like, as far as tracking, is that visual tracking, if that makes sense, without getting into, into too much in the weeds. And I would also tell you too, back to your original question about, like, the run part, like, I know Jeremy would say this, and I did as an announcer, is the first option always is if you run, here, run. And we'll worry about reunification later, you go to one of those two spaces, because we'll, we'll, we'll find you off camp, especially with our older kids. Um, and, and the fight is obviously the last, the last option, but barricade would be another one, is that, those are decisions made by, you know, Taylor mentioned the different scenarios, is if we got someone that's in a ZTE building. At that point, maybe the safest thing to say at the high school is, let's just keep the high school locked down. A lot of decisions gotta be made in short order, order, with, with, like, the information that we have, very fluid.
And I wish that you had a tool to also stop a threat in your office, but that's another story.
That's, that's another, that's another day.
Uh, as it pertains to the idea of, of the students' fight, what was discussed with that option?
So, like, grabbing something in the room, um, like, I don't know, like, there's, like, those yardsticks, I think Math has them in her, in, in her, um, one of the classrooms. Um, but having something that you could buy time.
Okay, so that was discussed.
Yes, yes.
The, the loop, the loop was discussed as far as just, like, throwing anything, throw a shoe, but.
Yeah.
Alright, great, I would say, as against the fight.
Excellent drill.
Yeah.
I think too, like, what Chief Doer did, is he, like, even peeked in, in like, line sight, right? You don't wanna be in the first line sight, be somewhere else, um, you know, so where, he was talking to the teachers too, like, where should, in a math room, where should you be located? Um, so I think that piece was probably the most important on all, you know, on all of it, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I also did, um, I did a feedback form for all my staff too, like, hey, what doesn't work in your room? Um, you know, we found the door that was, it could be jarred open. Um, so that was super, you know, just, just something that I didn't have to, like, go to each staff member, they reported back to me.
Because stuff like that comes out after the incident as well, we didn't realize.
Correct, correct, or I didn't have a shade in time, didn't know what to do with that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Taylor.
Good deal. Yep, sounds good. Excuse me, item F, WASB delegate resolutions.
Mary Ann, do you have a motion for that?
Oh, I need it, sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the board's review of the written peer evaluation submitted by Kinnear Marshall. High school principal under section 118.07, prepared for CP of the state statutes for the high school.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the report to the board on the drill for statutory requirements, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now, F, WASB delegate resolutions.
Yes, I have two fulls in so far, I have two more on three.
Oh, I, I, they're all good with me, I, I didn't respond to you via email though.
Right, so you, you were fine with all?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll give them to you, so you can respond, I heard you had a hard time getting in?
Yeah, I, you think it emailed you, but whatever matters.
Yeah.
And I tried Googling, and you think you could find it online, and I could not find it.
No.
I'll just copy, paste, hold it down, and send it to you.
And I need your response back, I'm not sure if you got mine.
I did, yes, yes, yeah, yours and mine are.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Good, good, yeah, I just thought a couple were interesting, like that decoupling the public credit funding, and also the report card consistency, I thought that was a pretty funky one too. So, okay.
But you said yes to all of them.
But I said yes to all of them, you know, the devil's in the details, and my guess is there's no legislation coming on either of them anytime soon, so. So, item number 11, legislative updates, uh, Jason mentioned that, uh, Testin and Krug will be here at 11:30.
11:30 on Friday in my office.
Do you know how much time they have aside for this?
No, but I can, I can ask, and I would tell you, it's typical that, uh, an hour to an hour and a half is about the most you could get.
Oh, yeah.
Of their time.
An hour and a half, I'd be shocked, yes.
I would as well, so I would say an hour.
An hour, okay.
We're fortunate that they're both coming up on that.
Yeah, okay, then, the other thing I wanna mention under this is, at you, with your WASB communication, um, they have started promoting the day at the Capitol, which is scheduled for March 12th. If anyone's interested in going, I don't know if that would be an approved travel, since, well, it's pretty important. If anyone's interested in going, I don't know if that would be an approved travel since, well, it's pretty important if we're
Yeah, I, I would, if that works within my schedule, I was actually gonna try to, I, I felt it was very important with it being the first year in a binding budget to maybe attend that, so.
Yeah.
I think if, I think, I mean, for me, that's a taking the school band potentially down there as a group and that may be a limited expense as far as travels.
Yeah, yeah.
And no cost with the actual
I am not able to attend because I will be in Florida for the month of March again. Um, but usually these events, what you do is you get down there and they do some education stuff in the morning and then in the afternoon, you go to the Capitol and, um, have appointments with your legislators. And we have a slew of them because our district is between two different center districts. So, okay. Uh, public comments. Doesn't look like we have any public here, so we'll go on to item number 13, future agenda items.
What did we say we were gonna add earlier? Did we mention something earlier?
Um, yes. Truancy, we talked about getting something on, um,
Truancy task force presentation.
School report card, yeah, truancy task force.
Thank you.
Yep. So the things we have done for February are the, um, ELA depart, the high school ELA department, uh, the HER report for first semester. Um, at some point in time, we're gonna do the administrative staff school year goals.
Yeah. I, I would say that would be coming sometime in March, would be my guess.
And then
Leslie, Taylor, are you the ELA department? Are they ready to go for February?
They're ready. They wanted to present to me, but
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, the promotion and retention policy. Is that also gonna be ready for March? I, I would say I hope, but it can't guarantee. We say tentative.
Yeah, cause Leslie, knowing the, with everything going on with the Act 20 and stuff, I think maybe give you some time.
And I, and I do think it's not, it wouldn't even take effect until like 2027. Like, we have to hit that, but then it's, so I, I think we're okay, but
Sometime before the end of the school year, it'll be, but it won't take effect until 2027.
Okay, and our problem is, is there's retention policy with the Act 20 and then there's regular, and so trying to figure out how to merge them or do they have to stay separate? So that, that's what we're trying to
Yep.
Okay. And then we'll have a PLC update in March also.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And then, um, yeah, in terms of the other item, the truancy thing, can we put that on, you think, for March?
It's up to the board. If you feel like it's
And I thought Lucy's garden was supposed to be on for an uptake.
Oh.
I thought we had that at least one or two minutes ago.
Okay.
Okay, cause they wanted to do this month when I said, I knew this was a busy, I said, can we move it, um, to February?
February seems okay. March seems like it's gonna be filling up here. It's like February. Let's do February.
Let's do February.
Leslie, can you communicate it?
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, we're gonna be busy, which is a good thing. Um, okay, so, um, oh, any other items that board members want to hand out to future agendas? Okay. Uh, 14, closed session. The board would consider moving into closed session for Wisconsin State Shoot 19.85, Grand One, Grand C. Um, oh, we need a roll call. Okay, um, well, um, Nick, you're the vice president. Could you do a roll call?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, now on closed session.
Thank you so much. Maybe I'll just pray as a day outers.
We're taking a short break, yes?